Michael S. Smith and Shontae M. Smith for a portion of Bay Shore Drive right-of-way lying adjacent to Lot 4, Block 4, Bay Haven First Edition subdivision. The public hearing was properly advertised. Affidavit of publication has been received for filing. Letters of no objection have been received from the appropriate parties. All interested parties have been notified as to the date of the public hearing. No correspondence has been received. The matter is properly before the board for approval.
Okay. And we do have a card in opposition and a card in favor, so therefore, let's have a presentation. Please, Andrew.
Andrew Pupke, Real Estate Management Director. The petitioners are seeking to vacate approximately a 12-foot portion of a 50-foot right-of-way adjacent to their property, and it is intended to release an existing encroachment and expand their property. This is the aerial that identifies. Can you see that? Does that come up? So, the area in blue is their property. The area in yellow and red that is shaded is the area that they were seeking to have vacated.
Okay.
And the fence runs along that line there where the yellow and red hash is.
Did you say there's an encroachment now?
Yeah, they have a fence that is encroaching into the right-of-way. There are no objections from county departments or utility providers at this time. The petitioners did amend their request based upon a previous conflict with some utility lines that ran kind of catty-corner across the corner of the property. And since that has been addressed, it no longer is an issue.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, then, the person who wishes to speak against is Jack Corey. Is he no longer present? Okay, while we're checking, the person in favor was Mike Smith. Mike, do you wish to speak?
No.
No? Okay. Let's just take a minute and make sure that Mr. Corey is no longer here, or...
He's in the back.
Is he coming?
He's in the hall.
If you want to come to the podium, sir. Come right up here. Good evening, and if you could identify yourself and your address.
My name's Jack.
And then you have three minutes.
I'm group.
Pardon me?
I'm the group speaker.
Okay, but you have three minutes. She's going to go ahead and set the timer, which is over there. She's going to turn.
I don't give more if I'm the group speaker.
Do you have five people here?
No, it didn't say that. It said group.
A group presentation requires five people.
I don't have the paperwork that I brought with me to prove anything. I just got this, I found it in the car. My girlfriend had it.
No, I'm sorry, sir.
And she lost it. I'm sorry.
Well, go ahead and tell us what your concerns are about this particular...
Well, my concerns are, I don't care if the county gives their land away, but they're trying to give my land away.
Sorry, this, our timer's not working, so please go ahead. Good old hour clock. So, it's not, you don't have any objections about this particular vacation?
No, no, no. This vacation is part of my land. You're vacating my land. The bottom part of it, 15 feet, is mine, not the county's, mine.
And you're right next door to the property?
I am right next to it. I am all the way around it. And they're trying to give away 15 feet of my land. 15 by 17.
Okay.
I don't know if it's on this...
Do you have a legal description that you've given to the county that proves that?
I had it. I don't know what she did with it. I can't even imagine. I brought the deed, and in fact, I brought two deeds. And hopefully, this will have a thing on to show you the sort to you. I don't know what she did with it. I had it, and she went to the ba... That's all she did. She went to the bathroom, and she lost it. She's across the street now.
Let me just continue this. Okay.
I'm sure there was a survey has to be done for us to do this, so...
Yeah, we would need it.
I've got several surveys.
Well, we've done a survey, I'm sure.
Okay. We could actually, if you want to wait until your girlfriend is back, we could wait...
She's not coming back.
She's not coming back?
No, she went to the toilet in her pants.
Okay.
And she won't come back in here. And it won't do any good, because I went across the street and asked her where the stuff's at, and she lost it. She has no idea.
We just found it.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Here it is. Here's the deed and the description and everything.
Have you shared this with our county staff before?
I've talked to them so many times, I'm blue in face.
Okay, but they've seen all the documentation that you have?
They haven't asked for it. This is the first I heard about it when I found out I was going to have them getting my land. They've got a fence around it, and I talked to them, to no avail. They chased me out of their yard with two German shepherds.
Okay. Mr. Administrator, do you have any suggestions?
I would ask for Andrew, just to address it from what he's done, to verify the survey, that the survey that they're presenting is accurate.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm 81 years old, and I've got bad ears.
I'm sorry, staff person behind you.
Besides you, our staff.
I would ask for him to address this.
If I could just move your plan for just a second, sir?
Sure.
Thank you. So, this is the survey that was submitted by the petitioner, and as I had shown you previously on the overview or on the aerial, this was verified by our survey department. The area in which we're speaking, the area to be vacated, again, here it is cross-tatched, is part of the 50-foot right-of-way. This portion of it, there's another 50-foot right-of-way here, so it is not Mr. Corey's property.
This is my property.
So, Andrew, the 50 feet...
Here's the survey. It's authenticating.
Do you know where Mr. Corey's property is, Andrew?
Right there.
I do.
That piece is mine, and I have a deed to it. I'm not asking for this other stuff that they fenced in, which isn't there to start with, but I want my piece. And you're trying to give it away.
I can only speak to the survey that was provided by the petitioner and was verified by our survey department. And the indication is that the area that we are, that the petitioner, excuse me, is requesting to be vacated is right-of-way. It is not private property. We don't have the ability to give away private property.
Right, I know you don't.
Right.
Legally. So, well, I, and so that land that was referencing is actually 50 feet and then some depth, and it's all public right-of-way?
Correct.
Right next to the property?
Correct.
Where is his property?
His property is to the south.
Is it towards Park Boulevard?
Correct. So, may I move your plan for just a moment, sir?
Yes, you can.
Thank you, sir.
I'll slide down.
Thank you. So, Mr. Corey's property is back here.
Yes, and it's this corner here, too, that you're trying to give away. You see that? It comes down to there. It does not come all the way down.
Right, but I don't believe the limits of what we are...
Wait, Andrew, can you show me which one is his property, Mr. Corey's property?
Certainly. This is Mr. Corey's property here, and I don't know the exact limits of it, but Mr. Corey, perhaps you can say that. The Smith's property is all in blue, and again, the petitioned area is this area in yellow and orange, or yellow and red.
Right next to it, to the left of the hashed, of the red and yellow, to the left of that, that's public right-of-way?
All of this is public right-of-way, correct.
Okay.
I have a deed.
Right, and we wouldn't have looked at Mr. Corey's deed. This is a petition from a petitioner requesting this. We verified their survey through our survey department, which is our standard procedure.
Which they then look at his surrounding deeds, and they look at other documentation to make sure it's accurate.
Yeah, I would assume so. They're not going to, they're not going to give their approval to us to move forward with a petition if there was private property that was being affected.
That extension kept going closer to Park Boulevard in that same, would that be entering his property, then?
Perhaps, again, I don't know exactly where that point is, where his property begins.
The man that sold me my property sold them a strip back there, okay? And it comes up, and it's 15 feet short. And it goes all the way across, and it's 15 feet on the other side. And that's my right-of-way to get into my property.
Right, so that's all county right-of-way to which he's referring, so that has not been vacated. It's still county right-of-way.
No, that's not right-of-way. This entire piece, right here, is mine. It's 15 feet by, I forget how many feet. 15 feet wide along the lane, along the south, contingent Bay Shore Drive, Seminole.
Sir, do you have a survey of your property? Do you have a survey?
Yes, sir.
Let's see your survey. No, no, up there, right there. No, no, just got to put it there.
Right here's the piece of my land.
Hold on, hold on.
They're trying to give away.
Go ahead. So, if you want to come around here behind me and go ahead and point to that spot.
All right, Mr. Corey, thank you. I think we have the information that we need. I think I have an idea of how to perhaps address everybody's concerns, so... Thank you very much.
Well, tell him your idea.
My idea is, I would suggest that we can, if you, I'd need to see if anybody else wishes to speak from the public, but we could take action on this to approve it with the staff just taking one more look at Mr. Corey's paperwork.
Well, if this gentleman has a deed, and, I mean, I don't know how we can approve something that we don't, that we have questions about.
From the looks of his plan, it's not different than this one. His line cuts across to a point that is similar to the location of what we have pointed out. Your, that dark line that goes across the drawing is your land below that. That's your land below that.
Yeah, the top dark line.
Right, and it goes all the way across to their, to their property, and the easement that they're asking for is above that line, in the public right-of-way. It's showing, if you look at that and you look at what they're asking for, everything above that line is what they're asking for. It's not...
They're asking for it all the way down.
No, they're not.
No, they're not. They took that off, apparently. That was part of the original request.
Or they have them.
That was taken back, and so, it's just down, it's down to where they're going. They're not going all the way down.
Have them take their fence off my property.
Well, that's a different issue. I'm just saying, what they're asking for is county right-of-way. Yours is below that.
Yes, it is below that.
Yeah, so...
I don't care about what's above it.
Right.
I don't want that 15 feet by 17 feet taken.
Okay, well, that's, that's, that's not your property. It's county right-of-way.
No, it's not. It's my property. I bought and paid for it.
It's showing right there, you showed us your survey. It's below that line. It's below that requested property. Your line goes right across there. It's a dark line.
I haven't seen anything that was any different. What they showed me was what this man here had, and it comes all the way down to my, to my property.
I'm just looking at, I'm just looking at all the drawings that have been given to us, and your property goes right across there, and they're asking for above the property, above your property, not below it. I don't know if that was, Andrew, was it originally below it? Oh, it was always, it was in a different direction? Okay.
Yes, sir, to the north.
Okay, so, but...
They also had their swimming pool on part of my property.
I don't see that.
You don't see it?
That's a civil matter.
Yeah, it's a civil matter. Anyway, Mr. Corey, thank you for presenting the information. I think Commissioner Eggers has responded appropriately. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address the county commission on Not sure he does. Okay, if there's no one else, then we will close the public hearing. And could someone assist Mr. Corey in...
I'm done.
Getting his documents? Thank you.
Please.
Okay, thank you. I'll close the public hearing under the wishes of the board.
Move approval.
Second.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Gerard, second by Commissioner Eggers to approve the vacation. All those in favor say aye.
I do have a.
I'm sorry, you have a question?
Yeah, just, just want to confirm again. Andrew, you've triple-checked to make sure this is not on his, on this gentleman's property, correct? And the second question was, he mentioned a fence. You mentioned a fence being, I guess, non-permit or invading...
The fence is encroaching into the right-of-way currently, which is part of the reason that we're asking for the petitioners...
But not down onto his property.
No, it's all my property.
Let me, please let me ask him, sir. Have we confirmed that it's not on his property?
No, that was not part of our investigation. And to your question about triple-checking, I can't say that we triple-checked. I can say that we took the sketch and legal that was provided by the petitioner, and it was reviewed and approved by our survey department, which is our standard procedure for reviewing sketch and legals before proceeding forward.
Okay. Survey, okay. Looking at the property appraisers, and I don't know how to read this, but you see that thin vertical 15-foot piece he's talking about? But we've checked that, and we're sure that it's not part of his property.
Well, I believe, to Commissioner Eggers' point, that the vacation comes all the way that far down. I can't say that with absolute certainty, but that's my understanding. Because again, if they saw, if the survey saw a conflict, they would have pointed that out to us, and they would have sent the, they would have asked us, pardon me, to send the survey sketch and legal back to the petitioners.
Did we talk to this gentleman before tonight, or was this the first time we've talked to him?
We have spoken with him.
You have, okay.
Yeah, provided him information on the petition at his request.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. And Jewel, our county attorney, would like to provide another comment, which is critically important.
And sure, and just to clarify, there is a motion and a second to approve this. If you do approve it, you cannot legally vacate private property. So, you would not be taking any action contrary to what has been represented by staff as far as this being an open right-of-way. If by chance it didn't, which I'm not saying it does, include private property, you cannot legally vacate it anyway. So, your action would not have the effect of transferring ownership of one private property to another private individual. Right-of-way, this, the staff report indicates it's platted unopened right-of-way. That, your action would vacate.
So, may I ask a question of the county attorney? So, to Mr. Corey's point, then, what I'm understanding you say is that the action that we take tonight does not take away his property, correct?
Any privately-owned property, that is correct.
There you go.
Does that mean I can cut his fence down? It's all my property.
Cannot give advice on that matter.
Did you hear what she said? She can't, she cannot give you advice on that part. It's probably not a good idea. I don't think it would be a good idea. I don't know. But I know we're not taking your property.
Well, and the fence has to go, because it's on my property. It's encroaching on my property, my private property.
Who put the fence up?
Took it down that rabbit hole.
Okay, then.
All right, thank you. Thank you for trying to shed some more information, and at this point, we're ready to take a The petition to vacate passes unanimously, so, thank you very much, and...
You'll hear from my attorney.
We're moving on to Agenda Item 56.
Agenda Item 56 is a quasi-judicial petition to vacate. All those wishing to give testimony in that item, please stand to take oath. You swear to tell the truth in the testimony you're about to give, signify by saying aye.
I do.
Quasi-judicial participation to vacate submitted by Thomas A. Marsh for a portion of a 10-foot wide drainage and utility easement lying in the west 7 feet of the east 10 feet of Lot 48, less the south 5 feet thereof, Imperial Point Unit 1 subdivision. The public hearing was properly advertised. Affidavit of publication has been received for filing. Letters of no objection have been received from the appropriate parties. All interested parties have been notified as to the date of the public hearing. No correspondence has been received. The matter is properly before the board to be heard.
I have two cards that have registered in support of this item, but are there anybody who is in objection to this big item? Then I'll close the public hearing.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Eggers and second by Commissioner Welch. Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 57.
Legislative petition to vacate submitted by Paradigm Investment Properties for a portion of 118th Avenue North, right-of-way lying east of Starkey Road and west of northerly extension of the east right-of-way of 87th Street North, Oakwoods Industrial Center, and a portion of 87th Street North lying north of the cul-de-sac, Oakwoods Industrial Center. The public hearing was properly advertised. Affidavit of publication has been received for filing. Letters of no objection have been received from the appropriate parties. All interested parties have been notified as to the date of the public hearing. No correspondence has been received. The matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Okay, this is 57, and I only have a card in support. So, is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak against this? And I'll close the public hearing on 57.
Question. Could I ask a question?
Pardon me, do you have any questions?
Yeah, just a question.
Okay.
That 87th Street North that goes, it looks like it goes up and then almost like a little cul-de-sac there, and is there a road that goes around that right-of-way right now? How does, what is going along the, I don't know which, the north side of that property?
It's an unimproved area. The cul-de-sac does end the portion of the street that is improved. This would be the back portion, so past the cul-de-sac coming around towards the west. It is a dirt road right now. The petitioner is seeking to utilize this land for additional employee parking. He's expanding his business in the area and doing some logistical changes to the front of his building, and is in need of additional parking for his employees in the back, so that's what this area will eventually be.
What is that 118th Avenue? Is that...
This is 118th Avenue.
That is, that is the...
Correct.
And it doesn't access anybody's property? I mean, other than, I mean, there's no property on this 87th Street North that uses that road to go out to Starkey? I mean, I know it's a dirt road, but...
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Just wondering if that was Brian Derry at that point, when you're naming of the roads, is that...
It's still on the left.
It looked like Brian Derry.
Okay, so, I'll close the public, I think I closed the public hearing already, but I'll close it again and see what the wishes of the board are.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Long and second by Commissioner Gerard. Okay, that passes unanimously. We're moving on to Agenda Item 58.
Legislative petition to vacate submitted by Jeffrey M. Conway and Pamela G. Conway to vacate all that portion of Beach Parkway lying south of Lots 30 and 31 and south of the vacated unnamed road right-of-way recorded in official record book 19747, page 1267, Harborview Number 2 subdivision. The public hearing was properly advertised. Affidavit of publication has been received for filing. Letters of no objection have been received from the appropriate parties. All interested parties have been notified as to the date of the public hearing. No correspondence has been received. The matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Okay. On Agenda Item 58, I have no one who is signed in to speak on this agenda item. I'm still opening it up for the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this agenda item?
I didn't sign in, but if you have any questions, I represent Mr. Conway.
Okay. But you're in support.
I'm very much in support, as a county resident.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, then I'll close the public hearing. What is the wishes of the board?
Move approval.
Second. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Welch, second by Commissioner Long.
It is.
Go ahead and vote. All right, unanimous approval. Nice to see you, Mayor Foster.
Always a pleasure.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Agenda Item 59.
Proposed resolution updating the maximum towing rate schedule in Section 122-42A of the Pinellas County Code. The public hearing was properly advertised. Affidavit of publication has been received for filing. No correspondence has been received. The matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Okay, I have a card in opposition to it, so, with, there's four names all together, so, five speakers, five people have to be present in order to grant the 10 minutes. But in the meantime, we'll go ahead and have a presentation.
Doug Templeton, Operations Manager with Consumer Protection. Before you, is a resolution with recommendation to increase the maximum towing rates to the Pinellas County towing ordinance. The ordinance was established in 2000, and it sets the type of fees and the amount of the fees that can be charged by towing operators. Currently, there's no registration or licensing mechanism in place within the ordinance. However, it does provide for regulatory enforcement and review of complaints by Consumer Protection. At the commissioner's request, we began reviewing the fees within other jurisdictions, locally and throughout the state. We also met with industry representatives for input and provided an opportunity to give feedback on their concerns as well. When reviewing the fees, we observed that there is no standardized vehicle class for these, for vehicles. So, in Pinellas County, we have four classes of vehicles. In other jurisdictions, there may be three classes of vehicles, so there's not a one-for-one comparison per se. However, Class A vehicles, which is the majority of the complaints that we receive in the, those are your cars, trucks, 10,000 pounds or less in most jurisdictions, are what, like I said, we investigate in the type of trespass towing complaints that we receive. With no change in the fees since 2000, we feel some adjustment is certainly needed to the fees. Majority of the opportunity is in the Class A vehicle fee structure. To include an increase in the base tow fee, we're recommending an increase from the Class A base tow from 100 to 110, the mileage fee from $3 to $4, and there's a 10-mile max in Pinellas County with that, and a storage fee increase for Class A vehicles from $20 to $25. We're also recommending an adjustment to the mileage fee for Class B, C, and D vehicles as well, from $3 to $4. When we reviewed the Class B, C, and D base tow rates, as well as the storage rates, we found that our current fees are more in line with the majority of those different jurisdictions that we looked at. Since the info that's in Legistar was entered several months ago, I do have updated fees that I'd like to go through real quick on what the recommendations are. So, currently... So currently, Class A, uh, Class A fees are $100 in Pinellas County. The proposed fee there is 110, that's bolded. If you look across, again, as I mentioned, there's Hillsborough, Pasco, Manatee. You have three different class vehicles. First is Class A, B, C, and V. And again, even within counties that have four classes of vehicles, the weights can vary, et cetera. But the bottom line is the Class A vehicle is the one that we're recommending that change to. That's specifically for the tow fee. When looking at the mileage fee, as I mentioned, Pinellas County currently is $3. We're looking to move to $4 across all four classes. Again, this provides the different fees that are in place, um, from $3 in Pasco for that Class A up to $6 in Polk, $7.50 in Palm Beach, however, those are police-directed toes only versus the trespass tow, which we're looking at. And then I'll also provide a comparison for the storage fees. As I mentioned, the Class A fee is what we're looking at, from $20 to $25 recommendation. The majority of the jurisdictions across the board for the Class A fees are very close to that. In Class B, C, and D, we're not making a recommendation, because again, we feel those are in line with the existing fees. So when we're looking at the fees, we wanted to find a fair balance between consumers and the tow operators. We didn't want a major impact on consumers immediately, but we also wanted to provide for an incremental adjustment for the tow operators. The recommendation allows for a 15% to a 17% increase depending on the tow situation. That's just one example. A base tow fee currently $100. The mileage fee, if it were the maximum amount of 10 miles, be $130. With the increase in fees, it would be $150. So it's a $20 increase or a 15% increase on what the tow operator will collect for a Class A tow, if that were the circumstance. With the additional increase in the storage fees, if you add that on to that example, you'd go from a total of $150 to $175, this time a $25 increase, which is about a 17% increase in the fees that they would collect. We looked at county, the various county landscapes and found that it could be significantly different from jurisdiction, jurisdiction to jurisdiction. The, of the eight counties that we looked at, six of those had some sort of licensing or application process, which could also include site inspection fees, vehicle inspection fees, insurance requirements, et cetera. And Pinellas County doesn't currently have those. But even from county to county, next door to each other, um, the towing ordinances are overseen by different agencies depending on where you're at. So it may be local law enforcement, it may be code enforcement, it may be a consumer agency such as ours. So again, you have a very different landscape, a different look. And for what the focus of, in Pinellas County, again, we deal with a lot of trespass towing. You have a lot of apartment complexes, shopping centers, um, who have contracts with tow operators. When there's violations, they're able to tow immediately, and they're typically valid tow's. It's a matter of someone not being in compliance with their apartment complex rules or regulations, or if they're at a shopping center, after shopping at a location, they may go across the street to the beach. And again, that's, it's a valid tow. It's just that the, what we look at or what the investigations we look into are when the fees are excessive or above what they're allowed to charge per the ordinance. So again, this is a start as part of our recommendation. We suggest, moving forward, that staff review this every three years. It's important to continue to meet with the tow operators, provide, have them provide that input, obtain feedback from them, and then incorporate those recommendations into something that we can bring forward to the board in the future.
Any questions? I'll start with Commissioner Gerard.
I still don't understand why you wouldn't just go to what apparently the standard is, 125, or maybe even 120. Why we would make that incremental thing when we haven't looked at it in 19 years? Why not just go to 125 and get it over with?
I agree.
Now, I'm looking at...
That wasn't a comment, I guess. It wasn't a real question, but it was. I don't understand your recommendation.
Part of it is a, looking at across the board. Consumer Protection is who holds this responsibility, and we want to make sure, again, that we're balancing that impact. You know, for a fee to go from one to another, to jump, again, we're looking at a, for that just example that I provided, and it could vary, but anywhere from 15% to 17% increase, and there's other fees that may be associated with that as well. But again, we want to find that balance. We know that it has been reviewed, but that's why we think it's more, very important to revisit this on a regular basis and take a look at that and incorporate this.
It would be, but we don't, so...
Commissioner Eggers?
Well, that was kind of my question, just looking at the Class A. I mean, we didn't even talk about Class Bs or any, the rest of them, but it just seems like, since it's been so, so long. Do you know by chance when Hillsborough and say Pasco, those two adjusted their rates?
Hillsborough adjusted, um, the Public Transportation Commission was dissolved in 2017, so they enacted an ordinance to regulate towing, so that was the last update to their...
When was that?
2017.
Okay. And Pasco?
Pasco just updated in 20, in the early 2019. They updated, prior to that, they updated their fees in 2009.
So they're pretty, they're pretty well updated. I mean, it's not like it's been 19 years or 10 years or...
Yes. Of the, of the eight counties we compared, six of the eight have updated within the last five years, and several of those were within the last year or so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Long?
Yeah, my concern is beyond the fact that it's taken us so long to look at this. They are still, let's just pretend that we moved with your recommendation. It still doesn't make our towers here competitive with the rest of the folks in the region. I don't think that's fair.
And again, the, we can, whatever the board would like us to look at, um...
I'm just saying, I think fair is fair.
Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know, I've been here since November of 2012, and not once have I got a communication saying, please raise the rates from the towers.
Well, were you here when they came last time? There were tons of them.
The only time it was brought up was when we were doing the resol, the ordinance dealing with towing at establishments that served alcohol. Then it's like, well, we're here, let's talk about rates. But otherwise, it's not like there's a high demand for raising the rates.
I agree.
I mean, I don't...
Commissioner Peters?
So, um, mine was another comment. My question was, um, is there a reason why you, because according to the letter we got, that you didn't invite the professional records to come and have a conversation with you, and maybe on the rates? And my question would be, why wouldn't we have invited? They've been good players and partners, as far as I know, for decades, and, um, and so I was just curious why you opted not to have them engaged in the conversation when you were making your decisions?
We did invite them two years ago, is when we had that original meeting.
Okay.
So we did invite them, and they were there. Mr. Seaman was there. He provided feedback as well during that meeting and post after the meeting. The, we previously had made recommendation. It was reviewed by the previous administration. But again, more recently, we were asked to bring something forward, and so that's when we've continued that review and brought the most recent recommendations forward.
Thank you.
I just think they've been very patient. I have been approached several times since I've been on the commission about towing rates. And I think they've been waiting for us to do something. So, let's do it.
Well, we have a, thank you very much. As I mentioned, we have, um, if you prefer, um, the Marsons, um, Marson Johnsons, Stephanie Watson Johnson, and Brenda Shirley, you can all take three minutes apiece. You would have to have five people signed up, so I'll start with Marson Johnson.
My name is Marson Johnson. My wife and I own Elvis Towing and Transport. We've owned the business for 40 years here in St. Petersburg. I'm also the first Vice President for the State Towing Association, PWF, Professional Racker Operators of Florida. The meeting that Mr. Templeton suggested that was discussed was for some property, um, private property towing. At that time, the attorney was also present in the meeting, and we had told him that there was some verbiage that was in the county ordinance that needed to be addressed, and he said he was going to address that and be taken out. And that has not taken place. We also, with, um, the late Commissioner Maroney, um, we had dealt with he, Neil Beckfield, Ms. Bostock. We had talked numerous times about, um, increasing the rates because they hadn't been done since 2019. Some, or, or 2000, I'm sorry. We just finished Polk County. We are actually meeting with Orange County and Seminole next month with the county commissioners there. I know that there was letters sent out. They said that there was nothing in the works, but there is. We've met with and talked with some of the commissioners. Some of the staff is not aware of what's going on. Pasco, we are going to address with Pasco. Hillsborough's the same thing, and Manatee the other. The, the issue when PTC was disbanded in Hillsborough County, they kind of just moved everything because they didn't know what they were going to do at the point because there was such, uh, conflict with, with inside the house. I came from Hillsborough County originally. I was one of the original members that helped create the PTC and met with the city of Tampa because all the police agencies didn't want to oversee the, the police or any of the rotations. And that's the reason that PC, PTC was originally designed, because the only thing that they oversaw was anything that had to do with rotation. It didn't have anything to do with the free enterprise or anything like that. I sent a package out yesterday to all of the, um, all of the commissioners. It showed what we had just got approved in Polk County. What we are asking for is if we could please get this tabled, where we can come back in. We were not invited to the workshop that just took place or any, we were not aware of any of these discussions that were going on. I spoke to my executive director, Mike Seaman, and he also made me aware that he was not, that's why I'm here. Not only to represent the towers in our, in Pinellas County, but this is a statewide issue. The, the costs that have gone astronomical are insurance, the cost of equipment and all of that stuff. When you guys are talking about a 15% to 17%, that doesn't do anything. We're talking 200% or 300%.
You need to conclude, please.
Okay.
I don't have a beeper anymore. We're timing it now.
We're timing it.
Okay. Our main thing is just to have it tabled where we can meet with whomever, and we can bring all the figures that they really need, all the documentation, so that we can get a fair price.
Okay, thank you. Stephanie, do you wish to speak?
I'll do this, try.
We pretty much covered everything that I wanted to say. I appreciate the fact that the commission does want to give us a increase. I appreciate the time that they, Pinellas County Consumer Protection has put into this, but I do think that more work needs to be done before a final rate increase is given. I think that it's just on the shy side and needs to be looked at.
Okay, and could you identify yourself for the record?
I'm sorry, I'm Stephanie Watson Johnson, Elvis Towing and Professional Racker Operators of Florida.
Okay, thank you. Brenda Shirley, do you wish to speak?
I'm on their behalf. My name's Brenda Shirley. I'm with Gulfless Underwriters. I do insurance for the towing industry from, since 1997. I simply came to support them with the way the insurance rates have gotten just out of hand in the transportation industry. So their overcost is getting, where they used to pay, you know, like 20 years ago, maybe $3,000 a truck. Now it's like $15,000 a truck for insurance. So I just came to support them to let you know that, you know, they need the increase to help them for their overcost in business.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's all the cards that I have. Madam Chair?
Madam Chair.
I have a, I have a question for our staff. Did we, um, send out a notice to the towing industry that we were having this public hearing today?
I did reach out last week to Mr. Seaman.
I'm sorry?
I did reach out to Mr. Seaman last week, the PWF executive director, I believe.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Gerard?
I just had a question of the towing organizations. If we, you want to come back?
Thank you.
You say you wanted to table it. It's a risky thing, since it's taken us 19 years to get here.
We're patient.
Yes, you are. But if we raised it to 125, would you still want to table it?
It's a mileage thing.
Yes, because there, there's other issues, not, not just the hookup, but the, the storage issues because of the cost and, and what it's increased. The $5 seems like a whole lot, but when you look at 20 years and all of a sudden we're coming, if you, that's why I sent you to Polk. If you review that and you look at what Polk's got, we're still, even if we were to agree at that, we're still behind the ball, and we're going to be back here coming again. We, it, it's like, you stated that, why aren't we coming even across the board with what everybody else is doing? That's why we're meeting with Orange and Seminole, Hillsborough and Pasco in order to, to get everybody up, and, and we're supposed to be in Palm Beach, and we're going to Jacksonville as well. Because a lot of the county commissions want to address this across. Because the major problem that we're running into now is we're losing major companies. I mean, big companies, 40 and 50-unit companies throughout the state of Florida, and it's going national because they can't afford the insurance, you know? When you're talking, our insurance went up 325% in 2017. So a 5% increase is nothing.
Did everybody receive the Polk County rates?
I did not receive anything. Did you mail it, or did you email?
It was emailed yesterday, yesterday morning, to all of the, uh, the commissioners. It came from Elvis Towing. Yes, correct. That's the package. And it had everything in it.
It had the ordinance in there, and then all of the rates that were proposed by the staff and their suggestions next to it.
And then the back part of it was the Pasco County or Polk County rates, which were just...
Just approved.
Just approved. I want to say in May.
And there's not a huge gap, but we'd like to be at the same as everybody else or what we're proposing to a lot of the other commissioners.
Well, can we, um, ask that the staff meet with these people and try to come up with something that's pretty much commensurate with the rest of the state, or at least where we think the rest of the state is going to be in, in the next six months?
Let's see what everybody else wishes to do.
I would like to see us do what Commissioner Gerard suggested, because otherwise, we're just going to be back here addressing it again.
Well, I think there's a balance here. Thank you very much. A balance between our consumers and citizens versus the business. And I think that's what our staff was trying to provide, appropriate balance in looking at the fees. I'm always afraid of, you know, once you start comparing yourself against another county, which we've already done, and then they start comparing against you, you start the spiraling rise in costs and charges. So I'll see what everybody else wishes to do, but Commissioner Justice?
Well, thank you. And I think your point about that comparison game, we can play forever. I have no problem deferring for a short period of time to give them an opportunity because I think that's fair, and I think that's right. And, and I do think my history in Tallahassee was I always had a good relationship with the organization, so I want to give them that fair shake. On the other hand, you know, if it's important to your industry, you need to be here. And again, I have not heard, not one single communication to my office that, hey, we need to talk about these rates. And the commissioners you mentioned haven't been here in seven or eight years, so, um, you know. But I, I find deferring for a short period of time to give them an opportunity to meet with staff, to give us all the information, so we make the best decision.
I second that.
Commissioner Peters and then Commissioner Welch?
And I, I, I would say, I've heard from, not only when I was in the legislature that I hear from, but when I was campaigning, I heard from, and I've heard from since I've been elected. So I've heard plenty from the industry. And I did reach out to them, and I saw it on the agenda, and that's why I was discussing this on Thursday, the differences, because it's not just the 125. There's different schedules with different groups, and, and some of them, there were $100 disparities. And on the mileage, there were significant disparities. And I'm not saying we should match everybody, I'm absolutely not saying that. But I would like to see them take just a, I, I would like to have seen them at the table when we were doing it. And, and had they been at the table when they did it, I think the conversation we'd be having right now would be very different. And so I would support like a six-month defer, just for them to negotiate. Maybe they could do it in two months, who knows? But I, you know, and I, my intuition tells me that the, the towing industry is going to come back with significant rationale as to why in 19 years they haven't had it, and now this is the rationale on which they think is the best way to go. And I'm, I'm not saying... And I'm, I'm not saying we match Polk County on anything, I'm not saying we compete that way, but I, I do think they should be at the table for at least the conversation. Because they have been good partners and they have been incredibly patient through recession, through gas crisis, through everything, they've been patient. So I would give them that. Thank you.
Commissioner Welch?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would support going back for further discussion as well. I've heard about this sporadically, it hasn't been consistent, but I do remember a few emails or letters, but nothing consistent. What email address would that have come from? Because I don't have it.
Elvis Towing. One word.
Yeah, I didn't.
It's showing going to everybody on the to list, so I mean...
It's in, it's in the spam folder for me.
I know.
So that's why some of us didn't get it. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. I hear support for deferring this for a short amount of time and at least meeting with the industry. So if somebody would like to make that motion.
I move that we delay this decision for 60 days and give them an opportunity to come to the table.
They're nodding, that's good, I agree. Second.
Second, okay. Motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Eggers, to defer for 60 days. We're ready to vote.
Oh, boy.
In the spam folder.
Yeah.
I know, I'm trying to get in here. It bumped me out while we were talking.
There we go. Okay, it's a unanimous decision to defer for 60 days. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for being here for such a large part of our meeting today.
Actually, it was very interesting.
Appreciate that. Had maybe a good education in the process. Agenda item 60.
Proposed resolution approving the fiscal year 2019, 2020 annual action plan and authorizing actions related to the administration and operation of the Community Development Block Grant Home Investment Partnerships and Emergency Solutions Grant Programs. The public hearing was properly advertised, affidavit of publication has been received for filing. No correspondence has been received, the matter is properly before the board to be heard.
I have no cards for anyone who wishes to speak on this item. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address us on the 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan, Agenda Item 60? Okay, close the public hearing.
Move approval.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Welch, second by Commissioner Gerard. Okay, thanks. Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you to the staff for the hard work. I know that's always a lot of work, Bruce, to you and your staff, to put that whole plan together, to decide which not-for-profits will receive funding, and it really is a very wonderful programs that you all put together. So thank you. Okay, 61.
Item 61, quasi judicial hearing. All those wishing to give testimony, please stand to take the oath. You swear to tell the truth in the testimony you're about to give, signify by saying I do. Thank you. This is case number DMP 090619, application of Bayou Development, Inc., for establishment of a development master plan for residential planned development zone property. The prop, the public hearing was properly advertised, affidavit of publication has been received for filing. One letter in opposition was received in connection with the local planning agency hearing. The matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Okay, I have two cards in favor of the project and none against. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak against this project? This is Agenda Item 61, Bayou Development. Then I'll close the public hearing.
Move approval.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Welch and a second by Commissioner Gerard. Would be any questions? Yes.
I just wanted to, again, I, I mentioned it on Thursday at our meeting, that, that as we move forward with this, making sure that there is sufficient designation of that Ninth Street pass-through that could very well become an entryway to the park, our park next door. It is connected, and I don't want people coming and buying property here and then saying, well, that was never intended. It's really important that those, those folks understand that this is very, this could happen. In fact, I know there's been discussions about opening it up to that park, so I'm not quite sure how that gets put on the record, but if you guys are doing the development, I think it needs to be indicated to the folks that are buying. And in fact, I don't know if there's anybody here, but there was some of the same effort made for a development off of Bee Pond Road, where the buyers of the property inside the promontory were told that that would not be an accessible road after the development was done. And so there was indications in their, I'm not even sure what documents that they were in, but it was part of the documents that was clear that that was not gonna be open in our public access to their property. And I think it's really important that the, any potential buyers understand that. So that's my only comment. And I don't know what we can do to assure that, but I think it needs to be a part of it, so.
I see Jake nodding his head that you can...
Okay.
He'll figure it out.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so the public hearing is closed, and we had a motion and a second, so we'll go ahead and vote. We're missing Commissioner Justice, so we'll go ahead and say it passes, six to zero. Thank you, okay. Next is Agenda Item 62. And I do have one card in opposition.
Item 62, quasi judicial hearing. All those wishing to give testimony in that item, please stand to take the oath. You swear to tell the truth in the testimony you're about to give, signify by saying I do. Thank you. This is case number Z 070619, application of Chameo LLC for zoning change from R4-1 to N3 family residential, RMH residential manufact, mobile manufactured home, and RPD residential planned development to RM multiple, multiple family residential, and RMCO multiple family residential conditional overlay. The public hearing was properly advertised, affidavit of publication has been received for filing. One letter in support and three letters in opposition were received in connection with the local planning agency hearing. The matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Okay, since there is opposition, then let's have a brief staff presentation. And then the registered citizen has four others, so she will be able to have 10 minutes.
Good evening, Michael Schoderbach with the Planning Department. This case and then the, the next case afterward are by the same applicant and are kind of connected, so if you, if you have any questions, I'll probably go through both together. This area is approximately 6.9 acres in size, consists of 27 separate parcels, all of which are vacant. The land use on the property is residential urban, which allows seven and a half units an acre. There's no proposed change to that density. The zoning atlas amendment is what's before you today, from R4, RMH, which is residential mobile home, and RPD, which is residential planned development, to residential multifamily on 4.7 of the acres, and residential multifamily with a conditional overlay on 2.2 of those acres. That would limit that portion of the development to only the uses of single-family detached townhouse development duplex or triplex. You can see the area here, we indicated the area in blue that has the conditional overlay on it, and the area outlined in red is just to straight RM without a conditional overlay. Property is to the south of Gandy Boulevard, on about the north and south side of Savora Boulevard, Savora Drive, around Snug Harbor Drive Road to the west of that. You can see all the, the lots here, vacant lots, consists of four different areas. There's a lot of unimproved right-of-way in between these. The surrounding uses, we'll start to the north, these are single-family homes here along the south side of Ricardo Place, northeast. To the south is all wetland area. To the south of this small triangle, there's a couple of development, either a mobile home or single-family home, and that runs along Mortola Drive, northeast. Various single-family or mobile homes on these lots. Large townhouse buildings down here. Just to the east of the property is a retention area, owned by Pinellas County. And off to the northeast is a townhouse that, unit that's under development. Directly to the west, there's a small, three parcels of industrial area, and then just north of those is single-family residence. A lot of different uses in and around this area. Again, the request, there's no change to the land use, only a request to the zoning Here's just a closer aerial overview. This is looking west, and you can see the parcels here. This is looking both north and south at the subject sites from Savona Drive. Property, and it's vacant, it's wooded. This area here is a Pinellas Trail extension that runs along the south side of Savona Drive, and you can see it in this picture as well. Now, if we go down to the parcels that are down to the south off of Mortola Drive, northeast, again, they are wooded and vacant. Two examples of the properties here. And if we swing back around to the north, the picture on the left is, there's 11 single-family homes that are directly to the north that are on that Ricardo Place. And off to the northeast is a 27-unit townhome development that's under construction. And then back down to off of Mortola Drive, there's 12 single-family homes that are to the south and east of the subject site. And to the west, across San Martin Boulevard, there's the small area of industrial uses. The proposed conditional overlay is just for that northern 2.2-acre piece, which would limit the development to single-family detached townhomes duplex, triplex. It would take out the apartment complexes or condominium buildings from that area. Again, there's no change in the maximum allowable density, RU at seven and a half units per acre, there's the potential for 53 units to be developed. Again, we find that they're appropriate, the lot sizes and development flexibility in the RM, with the RM, you have to have at least 10% open space, that open space requirement, and the smaller lot sizes gives a flexibility with development. The conditional overlay, limiting the uses against the single-family homes, is appropriate, it's compatible with the surrounding area, and we find that it's consistent with the comp plan. And staff recommend approval. And I'll answer any questions you have. Go on, detail.
Yes, Commissioner Eggers?
On the, you say it's compatible with the surrounding area, I'm talking about the RMCO. It seems like, it looks like a beautiful piece of property, right next to single-family houses. So between the road and then the trail and then the land, let me make sure I get the right one here, because, maybe that was the other side, but on the north side of the road, all those properties to the north of that property are all single-family homes, correct?
Yeah, you see on, on the overhead, is the overhead up?
Yeah.
All these properties here with address labels, these are all single-family houses.
Right.
This is the area outlined in red here, that is limited with the conditional overlay on it. Currently, it consists of 15 platted lots on here. So right now, under the R4, each, they could develop 15 houses.
Right.
The change to RMCO, then they would be able to do, you know, up to townhouses, duplex, triplex, but not apartments or condominium buildings.
But you could put 53 units.
Not on here, that's, the 53 is if you take the RU with the total acreage between all of the...
Okay, so only 15 on that area there?
15, well, 15 lots are what's there currently. If they were to replat and allow like smaller lot sizes, they may be able to get more in, but that's, you know, site plan.
Ooh, site plan. No touch. I get it, no. Ooh. So I, I'm a little...
Not seeing a site plan, I...
I understand, I'm just, when you, when you open up that possibility, it's not, it's not 15 single-family homes that's gonna go there, compared to what's there right now. So I'm not quite sure how you say it's compatible with, so that's, that was what I was confused on that particular piece.
Well, the compatibility we looked at with the conditional overlay was taking out those higher intense apartment buildings, condominium buildings, that would be larger block, they can go up to 75 feet in, in height. So instead of having, you know, a big towering lot there, a townhome development or, or a series of duplexes or triplexes is more compatible with adjacent to single-family than a, a large apartment complex.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for now.
Thank you.
All right, Sylvia Gusswoll. Oh, I'm sorry. I need to have the applicant, you have 20 minutes. Sorry about that.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South in St. Petersburg, number 451. Let me begin by saying that we come forward today with the full and complete support of your zoning staff and the full and complete support of the LPA who voted in support of this request. To make emphasis, there is no change of density here. There's no future land use amendment before, before you. The density will remain the same. We're not seeking to increase the density in any regard. And as the staff just showed you, this is a little bit different in terms of this being a little bit of a wide area. If we could go to the overhead, please. Is that up for you? So this rezoning includes all this area, all of this area, and these two areas here. So this would be a wide-area residential. Currently zoned R4, RM, we moved to RM, we're working with the staff, because that allows options and allows a lot of variability in terms of being able to develop the site as you go through the puzzle of retention and environmental areas and all those sort of things, it gives you variability, also allows more open space. Now, during the process, staff excised from us two important conditions, which is why we're in the conditional overlay. So this is the conditional overlay. One is, the property extended into this area, staff asked if that would be removed, we said yes, we would do that. And then the second element, which Mr. Schoderbach just mentioned to you, is they also restricted it from condos or apartments that would stack up, because they felt that was not compatible. So we did agree to those in this area here, so that we felt, or I should say, the staff felt and the LPA felt that that made it a lot more compatible residential to residential. Now, it's also important to know that adjacent to the site right here is a townhome project going up. These are just a couple of quick photos of it. So that's certainly what's going on in the area, in the immediate area and adjacent to the area. And just an example, this is conceptual of what potentially is proposed. This is a Grady Priggin property, and working with him tonight. So you can see what's proposed is a very upscale, nice-looking townhome development. RM does allow a variety of single-family, multifamily variations for lot sizes, flexibility, again... Again, it does allow for typically more open space. So in terms of total density, there's no change of traffic. Any kind of water issues or potential flooding issues will actually be better once the sites and properties are engineered for it rather than just being purely vacant lands now. So in regard to your staff reports who note to you, just on the comp plan objective 1.2, 1.2.3, 1.2.4, that both on zoning and future land use issues, the site is compatible and would work well with the surrounding properties. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions or concerns you might have.
You had said that the densities are not going to change.
Density, the density can't change.
Okay. So, so the number of units that will be on that piece to the north that is currently allowed will be no different than what you are asking for?
To my understanding, in terms of future land use amendment or no future land use amendment, the density will remain the same. Now, my understanding is that they may be able to configure a little bit more in there depending upon how those lots come out and how the planning comes out. But that would not be a big change or any, any kind of substantial change.
My question is, one of the letters of concerns that we received is public correspondence. Will this be on a septic system? It says that, or do you know?
Actually, I'm not, I'm not sure that answer.
You don't know?
We don't do that. New construction.
And where it's located.
Good evening, Renee Bassett, Planning Director. This property simply cannot develop in this manner on septic. It cannot. It's in the city of St. Pete's utilities area. They will have to bring utilities into the site. My understanding is there are some homes in there that are still on septic, and so they're, you know, they may have an opportunity to, to connect through this.
Be a nice opportunity to change that.
It may, it may. If I can address one other question that Commissioner Aggers brought up. The, the math on the density right now on that north piece, essentially they can get one additional unit just on the math of above the 15 platted lots that are there now. I think the other thing that's important to note is the RM requires a 10%, minimum 10% set aside of open space. In the R4, there is no requirement for set aside of open space. So they're going to have to do a few things fundamentally through the site plan process that will set aside some of the open space that you probably would lose if someone were to go and come in and just put in the single-family platted lots.
Thank you.
I do want to note for the record that the LPA was a five-to-two vote. You said it was unanimous.
I said there was good support, I believe. I didn't mean to imply anything else.
Right. Well, I interpret that in a different way. Okay, anybody else at this point? Okay, then we will...
Thank you.
I don't know how many minutes you have left.
16 minutes and 36 seconds.
All right, it's now time for Sylvia Griswold.
She has 10 minutes.
Hello. And could you identify yourself and...
Sylvia Griswold, 1198 Ricardo Place, St. Petersburg, Florida, 33702. I live in between these two projected developments. And if I could, our situation is unique because if you look at that map, there's 10 little houses, then there's all this actually beautiful green trees. And it kills us to see the thought of those trees going because we have so much wildlife and it's such a quiet neighborhood. But our bigger concern is that when you get done building all these things, this is going to be us, sorry. And this is going to be them. On both sides of us. So you're basically going to box us in. So these are our houses, and this is what's going to happen if you let them build on both sides of us. And again, you're talking about 10 single-family homes. You're not talking about like a huge development. And I guarantee you, there's not one other place in this county that you have 10 homes surrounded by these big developments. And, you know, I know they say open space, you know, but the open space is where the parking lot is, the open space is where the retention ponds are. You put, you know, okay, this is a townhome and this is a, you have single-family homes, at least you have a little space in between to let the light come through. You know, if you do this and they're constantly eating townhomes, where's the light coming from? We lose all of our quality of life, you know, right now. And I'll be speaking in the next segment too because that's very important too because I live on that street. I believe the conditional overlay, I'd like to see it on the other side when we get to the next presentation. And this is the other thing that they failed to show you in that area. These are our houses. I don't know if you can see that if I got it in the right place.
That's exactly where you need to place it, thank you.
Okay, these are our houses, simple, basic little homes that we've all, I've been in my home 35 years. I've worked two jobs to pay for my home, which I'm very proud of. And my neighbor, Dan Danicker, who couldn't be here, he's lived in his home, his uncle owned the home, his uncle named the street. He was the first one there. His house is actually on the ground. So that's another huge issue for us too is all the water. You're going to put us in between this, and not only are we going to be, but you're going to build them up and we're going to be down. So it doesn't even, I mean, I know it makes sense to think about someone said at the last meeting trending. Do we always have to be trending? Do we always have to follow the path that, in that direction? Can we maybe try to preserve some of the quality of life for the people that live in the neighborhood? And that, like I said, that's our neighborhood. This is, you can hardly see, but there's houses behind there on San Martin. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that area. There's some beautiful homes on the back roads. And if you notice the trees, everybody has kept it very natural, very, you know, everybody understands the beauty that we have. That's on San Martin, that back road. And there's some beautiful expensive homes back there and they're absolutely, but if you notice, they're covered in trees. They've kept with the, the beauty of Whedon Island Preserve is right there too. You know, you're, it's right abutting some of this property. Now, this is that townhome that he was talking about. And I'll just speak on that for a couple of minutes, and I'll speak on it again at the next. They started that townhome project four and a half years ago. They cleared that land four and a half years ago. I live right next to this land. My property abuts this land. I'm at the end of the county and that's the city. This is what I've lived with for the last four years. And you know what they tell me at the city is that when it's done, I won't have any problems anymore. Okay, that one building, they're supposed to build five units there. And you know how much they've built in a year? That one unit you see standing is all they've built in a year. So if you do the math, I'm expected to deal with this stuff for the next four years. So like I said, if we continue with these big developments, how long is it going to take? How long am I going to have? Well, we, as a neighborhood, all my neighbors are here. And, you know, at the last meeting, Mr. Pressman, there were only two people spoke. Well, there were more people there. Maybe they just didn't want to, they didn't know what to say. And when you only have 10 houses, there's not a lot of people to speak. And as you spoke, as you spoke of, there's beautiful, the land out there is gorgeous. I've never had problems with coyotes since they built that townhomes, cleared that land. We've had three cats eaten. I have them on my cameras at night. So the more land you take away, I mean, I think we put ourselves in a position, I mean, you just basically hurt the environment. There was actually a thing on CNN, it was funny, because the other day I was going through CNN, and it says US cities are losing 36 million trees a year. And I know we will still lose trees if they build single-family homes, but I think we would still be, we'd be able to get a better natural feel. And like I said, for us, imagine living like that with everybody, I mean, and I know it's his property, and I know he has a right to do things on it. And I know, you know, I just hope that you all take into account, the other thing I would like to do is see some type of site plan before we go forward, to see exactly how far they're going to box us in. You know what I mean? Give us some idea of what we're looking at. You know, the traffic on San Martin is horrible. There were two accidents in the last week. And I don't even know if you guys are aware, Amazon has moved into the behind Derby Lane. They have 200 trucks. They come and go every day. I've got video of their parking lot at night. Trying to get out is ridiculous. They're supposedly going to do something with that 83rd, the bridge there. I can't even imagine what the traffic's going to be like. I talked to someone from the traffic department, you know, because this is going to impact us, even though he says it's not, it is. Savona is just a road. My road is a dirt road. We have maintained that road as long as I've been there. The city doesn't come down past my neighbor's mailbox. It's a privately maintained road. And I just think, like I said, I understand that they have the opportunity, but can we just maybe kind of keep it in perspective? And also, I don't know if they need any more townhomes. These behind me, they haven't sold, like, I don't think any. They've only built one building and that's not even done. So I mean, we're, like I said, my concern is we're going to be in that zone over and over and over again. If they don't sell, then what happens to our property value? What happens, you know, are they ever, if they don't finish that? I'm fighting with the city right now to see if they'll at least put up some type of barrier between me and them so I don't have to look at that every single day. You know, it is, it is, I think we do a disservice. And like I said, the trees, they talk about climate change, they talk about, you know, the flooding and, you know, he says, oh, it's going to be better, it's going to be better. Do you really, is it going to be better? I mean, you saw those pictures, is it really going to be better? I mean, we don't know. It's all a toss-up. And again, you know, I just feel we need to maybe sometimes put the whoa on how much we do. All those houses around there, you saw on San Martin, all those are single-family homes. The only townhome development is that one that St. Pete is letting them build. There's no other developments. There's one over by the water, which I understand on the water, there's some, you know, there's some beautiful townhomes, people have their boats and stuff. But as you said very nicely, those are single-family homes. I've lived in my home for 35 years, I raised my children there. They come home for dinner, you know, and all my neighbors. We just want a little bit of peace and quiet. We want a little bit of, what is our quality of life? Do we get any rights here as a citizen? I've been here for, like I said, I've lived in my home for 35 years. My neighbor's in, actually Marilyn's selling of his uncle's farm. He's been there for 60 years and he's on the ground. So like I said, you're going to let them build up and we're just going to be like in this little, this little trench. So, I mean, I, like I said, I, I get it, but at some point, can we just maybe try to, you know, all live together in a, I know there's no perfect world, but I would like to think there might be. But I'll be back to see without my boxes.
I actually think that was a very clever way of providing a visual...
Very nice visual action.
You're the first in my 21 years to do something like that.
But see, nobody takes into account, you know, you see the pictures, but unless you live there and you realize that they're going to cut off everything you've had, and like I said, I know he owns the property, but can we maybe work together to come up with a solution that is, you know, compatible, like you said, compatible to the environment around it? Just because that one gentleman is building townhomes behind me, and I don't even know how he got the permit to do that, there's nothing there that's, there's no other townhomes unless you go back all the way down to Snugger River Road. And that's just my, you know, like I said, that's my, like I said, I don't want to be boxed in. I love my house. I love my kids, I love they come home, you know? Everybody has dinner, we walk the dogs, we sit at night, and we just look at the beautiful, you know, surroundings. I just would like to keep a lot of that. But I'll be back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the county commission on this? Because that was the only card I had, and she, you know, was representing, I believe, the neighborhood, so. Okay, Mr. Pressman? Oh, and then I have a question for our staff after that.
Many Chair Commissioners, I always have the greatest respect for citizens, but unfortunately, I have to clarify the record because I think what was presented to you was presented in good faith, but unfortunately, I see as unfortunate little misdirection. So let me show you, let me tell you first of all that this site is not anywhere near Whedon Island Preserve. That's been discussed before and staff has presented that. You can just simply look at a map. So that, that is not the case. Secondly, what I'd like to show you is looking at the site in terms of being boxed in. Bear with me a second here. So if we could zoom in there. So this would be the site here. So let's talk about this boxed-in element. So these are the single-family homes that are about half of the lot.
Hold on, can you?
There we go.
Okay. So these are the single-family homes, this is the site of the project. So the single-family homes are on a longer lot, 156 feet, so it's approximately half the lot. That means approximately 70 feet to the rear. Then you're looking at what maintains a nice buffer, because as she said, it is well-forested. So you have a nice buffer through here that'll maintain. Then we have a buffer and setback on these sites, and then of course, a setback from the front. So quite frankly, showing some UPS boxes is clever, but with all due respect and to be factual here, that doesn't really show you the status of the situation on one side. When you look at the other side of the box, this would be the project area here, can you see that? So when she was talking about the other side, you have Ricardo Place, which is the road, street, then you're going to have a front setback to homes over here. So quite frankly, you're going to have quite a bit of distance and a lot of buffering between the project site and the homes that she's talking about. To clarify, this is the second item that's coming up tonight, which is under Mr. Persson as well, which is located over here. So that's what Ms. Gridwell is referring in terms of being boxed in. So in terms of distances and buffering, it's pretty extreme, it's pretty long. With respect to Ms. Gridwell and the citizens, I would also say that I, I think their wish, and I don't mean this negatively in respect, but I think their wish is that this property would just remain vacant. But as you well know, it's zoned R4. Residential can go there now. Residential under I4, under R4 can be a mixed multiple family use and can be high up. So the option is not approve this project or not, the zoning allows a residential at a height element. And I mentioned Whedon Island, I mentioned the height and the distances, and I believe those were the main points that Ms. Griswold had. So again, in summary, your planning establishment of the county, your appointed members of the LPA move this forward. Again, your staff excise from us to critical conditions, what we chose to meet with to make it compatible, and we believe that it does. And we believe that buffering and setbacks will exist, or factually will exist, that will help the site be compatible with existing residential. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Adam, Chair? Mr. Pressman, did you say in your opening argument how high this development was going to be?
It's, the permitted height is 45 feet.
Correct.
And like any zoning district, the structures may be, may be brought into that level or they may not, but 45 feet is the maximum.
But you don't know what this particular one would be.
It hasn't been specifically determined, but the maximum is 45 feet. So we're in the zoning clog now, and then planning will come in by the applicant to
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Pressman?
I will mention one other thing is, one other thing we could look at is the setback under the RM is five feet. What we could look at, if it would make you, it would make you more comfortable, we could look at a setback of 10 feet if you want to add that into the conditional overlay, which would then create more of a buffer from five feet to 10 feet under the difference between the R4 to the RM that we're doing now.
Rather than 7 feet.
I'm sorry.
Rather than 7 feet.
It would be, if you would like to consider a 10-foot rear setback versus what's, would be a 5-foot setback under the RM, you can add that into the conditional overlay. That would increase that forested buffer and the distance another five feet to a total of 10 feet. So that's one thing we, we could look at if you want to consider that.
Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Commissioner Long asked my question, but I am curious from the staff's perspective. So you thought 45 feet in height was appropriate in this area?
Yes. Currently, under...
Yes. Currently, uh, under the current zoning districts that are out there on this property, the R4 and the RMH both allow thirty-five-foot height maximums. RPD, uh, as we saw with the, uh, previous, the previous cases per a development master plan, they could go higher under that, uh, proposed RM forty-five feet.
And it's at forty-five feet now?
Yeah, the difference in ten feet. And as Mr. Pressman had noted, uh, the current R4, the rear setbacks are ten feet. In RM, it is five feet. And with the conditional overlay, uh, part of that allows for increases in setbacks. We only did the, the uses prohibiting certain types of uses. But there are other options under the conditional overlay, uh, which, uh, limit maximum height, increase setback requirements, uh, limit pervious coverage, uh, and specific design criteria. So, there, there are those options as well.
Yes, Commissioner Eggers?
And these are all like, I think, they're site plan questions, uh, and is, that, that area is, is gonna have to be raised up, given where it is, I am, I'm, I'm sure. Does, is it forty-five feet? It's now currently at thirty-five feet height maximum, uh, under, under R4. Under this news, it goes up to forty-five feet max?
Four, yes. And that, and for, for your information, it is in a flood zone, and I verified that the base flood elevation in that whole area is nine feet. So, the base flood elevation is nine feet, so they have, they have to start at ten feet and they can go up from there.
Forty-five feet from there, so they can go up fifty-four feet.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five feet.
Just, um, one additional, I did, I looked up on the, the contours and this area, right now, the elevations in this area are four to six feet. So, if you're looking for a reference point between existing elevations and base flood, so you're talking about, you know, five feet probably, four to five feet. Typically, what they would do is pop those up and, and park underneath, so. Rather than trying to bring in four to six, you know, four to five feet of fill is, in that area is pretty, pretty difficult. So, again, it's a site plan issue, but.
So, but the zoning change is, is gonna allow a little more height?
The zoning change would allow some height, and that is something to, to be considered with, um, with the conditional overlay. That, I mean, you, you can ratchet that down.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Any other questions? Okay, um, all right. County Commission, what are your deliberations?
Well, I, I kinda like, they were, they were very giving on the five to ten-feet setbacks, but, I mean, I, for me, it would, I'd rather have the the conditional overlay be a little lower than it is. I mean, I think they're ratcheting it down, as you said, I mean, I, because it does, you are, you are gonna be off the, you know, that elevated area above the, what do you call the meeting? Yeah, thank you. It's gonna be above that. So, I mean, for me, I, I'd be a little more comfortable. We could get some height, uh, ratcheting down, if you will, in that area. So, I'd be comfortable with at least five feet less on the height and, and then the increased five feet on the setback. I know we can't, this is, I feel like we're getting into site plan stuff, but it's really part of the conditional overlay that you're talking about. So, I think if we did both of those things, I think at least you're being, um, more respectful of the area and at the same time getting to do some development there, so.
So, you're suggesting forty feet in height?
Yeah, it's forty-five now? Yeah, forty.
Forty feet in height. And what with the setback?
Ten-foot setback.
Ten-foot.
Ten-foot.
Instead of the five-foot.
Okay, how, what does everyone else think?
Just, so you said the current height of the homes that are there now is thirty-five feet?
The, the current permitted height is, would, is thirty-five feet. I don't know, you know.
We don't know what the actual?
I don't know the actuals, that they're, if they're on, she said, I mean, she indicated one gentleman was, was slab-on grade, so if that's a one-story house, you're probably, you know, so.
The other ones aren't.
Some of the other ones aren't, so if they're, you know, it's AE-nine now, the, you know, on the zoning map, or the, the flood elevation. So, if they popped them up and parked underneath, then they're one-story, so they're probably twenty-five, thirty feet at the most.
Commissioner Justice?
Thank you. So, currently, the thirty-five-feet foot is on top of the nine or ten-foot elevation that they would have?
Yes, sir.
Similar to what the current residents have
Correct.
with the drive underneath, correct?
Correct.
But then they could go thirty-five feet over?
Thirty-five over, thirty-five from base flood elevation.
Currently, they could build that today without?
Correct.
And under Commissioner Eggers' suggestion, we'd go to forty?
Forty.
Does that make a difference?
It gives them a little flexibility, you know, in, in design with, with townhomes. The, the other thing to be, the, the firm maps, the proposed firm maps that will be coming into play when those are finally adopted, and I honestly, I'm sorry, I don't know when those are, it's soon, I think. The base flood goes to, um, to ten. It's an AE, it's a, it's a A-ten elevation, so how that may factor. Again, if we're measuring from base flood, it probably doesn't have a, you know, that will carry through. We have one of the new firm maps, so there may be another foot or two in there that, um, they may have to adjust to on the new base flood elevation maps. But, but five feet is certainly five feet. It gives you a little more architectural, it's design, you know, for, you know, when you're building a product. Is it gonna make or break it? I, I'm, I can't speak to that.
Does Mr. Pressman wanna respond? Is he able to respond on the fly on some of these things?
Well, we're always here to work with the commission to what the commission is comfortable with, um, and it looks like some of you are working in that direction, so. As I always say, we're happy to work with the commission, what you're comfortable with. We believe, or not believe, but there will be a substantial distancing and buffering, and there'll still be remaining good buffering between the residents, to the north and to the south. Uh, that's a surety. And, um, the homes on the north, which we'll see in a little bit, will have significant distancing. So, we think it's appropriate. We think it's compatible. Your staff clearly thinks it's compatible. The LPA did. But we're happy to work with the commission, whatever direction you wanna go.
Commissioner Peters?
So, um, I mean, I get what she's saying with the boxes. It's very visual, and unfortunately, many of us with the new FEMA maps have got the same situation. And I know when, when they build on either side of me, I'm gonna have the exact same thing. I have no choice because of the FEMA maps. And so, I mean, if it's already at thirty-five and, and they're willing to do the buffer, you know, I, I, I would move to support this. I, I think it's, it's, it's reasonable. And again, with all the FEMA maps in Pinellas County, unfortunately, has the highest number of lots that are affected by those FEMA maps. But, um, anything that you build is gonna be above floodplain and then above, so no matter even single-family home, whatever they do, they're gonna lose their sunlight. Whether they like it or not, they're gonna lose their sunlight, just like when somebody builds next to me, I'm gonna lose my sunlight. Unfortunately, I am. So, I, I, I would support the staff's recommendation.
Okay, so I need a little more clarity because with the firm levels and everything like that, so the forty-five feet that's proposed includes that ten feet?
It would, it would include, it would be measured from the base flood elevation.
So, it's really no change from what it is now?
Oh, yeah, it's ten feet more.
It's, it's higher.
That's what I meant. So, it is ten feet higher than, okay.
So, right now, they could do thirty-five feet measured from base flood elevation, so let's assume for.
So, the highest height would be thirty-five feet?
No, forty-five. It'd be plus ten, plus your ten.
That's what I thought, so it'd really be forty-five.
Under the current zone, you'd get thirty-five to forty-five. Under the proposed, you'd go from the ten plus forty-five, so you'd be at fifty-five.
Right.
So, forty-five to fifty-five is from current to proposed.
I know. That's, I just wanted to make sure I understood what I was hearing.
It's reasonable to push it down five feet with the conditional overlay.
One of the conversations that we had while we were in Washington was about how FEMA, aren't those floodplain maps changing here pretty quickly?
Yes, ma'am. I don't know the date, but they're, all the draft flood maps are on our website and readily available.
The new ones?
Yes, ma'am. If you go to the Flood Map Service Center on our website, you can see the existing and the proposed.
Isn't this area flooding a lot already?
I can't speak to that. I do know that, I think the, I, based on the testimony that these folks have provided here at the LPA, they have experienced flooding. Um, I don't know if that's limited to Ricardo Place. I don't know the extent of it myself.
Thank you very much. So, personally, um, I like the idea of the ten-foot setback on the rear, but I also would prefer to go from forty-five to thirty-five feet because you're still with that firm, gonna end up with a forty-five-foot footprint, height footprint. I can't make a motion. I'm just expressing what I think. Anyone else?
So, then, okay, so, different than what I said.
You said forty, I'm saying thirty-five, plus.
Yeah, plus the ten feet or whatever that actually turns out.
The ten-foot flood elevation.
Mr. Welch hasn't said a word.
No, I haven't, have I? I'm listening.
I'm waiting, patiently.
It's a tough one. I, I kinda agree with Commissioner Eggers' initial recommendation of the ten-foot setback and then the forty. But then the whole question of where this whole area is in forty years is another question.
And aren't we talking about that bridge over there?
San Martin, right.
I mean, I just think that's asking for trouble.
So, definitely with the setback, the, the ten-foot, I support that, and either, either the forty or the thirty-five.
And I'll agree on the ten-foot rear setback.
I would make a motion for the forty-feet height and the ten-foot setbacks and the conditional overlay.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Eggers and a second by Commissioner Girard, that is for a forty-foot height and a ten-foot additional rear setback.
Not additional, but ten feet.
Pardon me?
Not ten additional to the five, but ten.
Right.
Yeah.
Ten feet total rear setback.
It's five.
Right. Everybody understand?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, it passes six to one. Okay, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item sixty-three, uh, same process.
Item sixty-three is a quasi-judicial hearing. Those wishing to give testimony, please stand and take oath. Swear to tell the truth in the testimony about to give, signify by saying I do. Thank you. This is case number Z-oh-eight-zero-six-nineteen. Applications of Shimao LLC for zoning change from Z, from G, GO General Office and R4, one, two, and three-family residential to RM, multiple-family residential. The public hearing was properly advertised. Adverbatim publication has been received, filed, and no correspondence has been received. The matter is properly before the board to be through.
Okay. Um, we have, again, opposition, and so we will need another staff presentation.
Michael Schoderbach, Planning Department. And this case is very similar to the north side of, of Ricardo Place. Area is approximately three and a half acres. There's two parcels, both of which are vacant. Future land use is residential urban, which allows seven and a half units an acre, and residential office general, which allows ten units an acre. No change to either one of these designations. They're looking for a zoning atlas amendment for R4 on two-point-two acres and general office on one-point-three acres to RM residential multifamily. You can see the property outlined here in red, a little bit closer to Gandy Boulevard, just off of Gandy Boulevard. This is an old picture. There is now, this site has been redeveloped with a 7-Eleven gas station, so there's gas pumps and a newer building on this site, an office building right here at the corner of San Martin and Gandy. Uh, off to the east along Gandy is a boat and RV storage. And just south of that is that townhouse development that's under construction. South of this property on Ricardo Place is the single-family homes. And to the west on San Martin, there's single-family homes, uh, right behind a strip center that fronts on Gandy Boulevard. Again, no changes to the future land use map, just a request to change the zoning. And another, uh, overview of that aerial showing that the property is vacant. This is looking, uh, south at the site. This is from, a picture on the left is from the entrance off of San Martin to the 7-Eleven. Site is over here. This is looking northeast at the site from San Martin and the intersection of Ricardo Place. Property is here, the wooded area in the middle. Uh, this is looking north at the site from Ricardo Place. And then looking, uh, down Ricardo Place to the northeast. Single-family residents are on the right side and the proposed development is on the left side. And on the left picture here is eleven single-family homes that are on the south side of Ricardo Place. The proposed twenty-seven-unit townhome, uh, development that's under construction to the east. And the commercial, that's the office building, the back of it, looking from the site, that's along Gandy. And then to the west across, uh, San Martin Boulevard, some of the single-family development there. Again, no change in the maximum allowable density. Uh, the potential is thirty residential units when you combine both these parcels together. And we find that the proposed amendments are appropriate for lot size and development flexibility and compatible with the surrounding area and consistent with the comp plan. And I will answer any questions you have on this.
Okay, and so we can answer this right up front. What are the setbacks and what are the height?
Well, this one's a little bit different. Currently, uh, this has, uh, two zonings. The first zoning, uh, we know R4, which allows single-family, detached duplex, triplex, and, and townhomes as a type-two use, thirty-five-foot height limit. The general office zoning is mostly for office buildings. And that allows up to a seventy-five-foot height limit if somebody's trying to put an office building on that. That drops to forty-five feet when you're within fifty feet of a residential property.
Which will be forty-five feet.
And again, the setbacks for the R4 and all the heights are, are thirty-five feet. Front setbacks are twenty feet to structure, whether it's single-family detached, detached, or duplex, triplex. And the rears are ten feet. The general office and height seventy-five, forty-five, if you're within fifty feet of residential. Has a five-foot front setback, ten-foot side and rear.
Okay.
And the proposed RM, forty-five-foot height, five-foot rear on the property. Ten-foot to structure, twenty-foot to garage on the development on RM. Rears are five.
What, what is, what is the forty-five on that?
Forty-five-foot height?
Yeah. I thought you said it was thirty-five. I'm sorry.
Forty-five. If they did single-family detached on, and under RM, it would be thirty-five, similar to the R4. But any other, single-family attached, two-dwelling and three-dwelling are forty-five-foot heights. The setbacks are ten feet to the front structure with a twenty-foot setback to the garage. The setbacks are 10 feet to the front structure with a 20-foot setback to the garage. They can not have the garage closer than the front structure. And then 5-foot rear, 5-foot side end yards. And the same base flood elevation in this area.
Okay, any questions for Michael?
Thank you.
At least for now, thank you. Okay, Mr. Pressman.
Thank you. Madam Chair and Commissioners, this is a bit different than the last one you saw. If we could go to the overhead, please. Is that up for you?
Yeah.
So this is the project area here. We were down here previously. This is GO General Office and R4, which is 1, 2, 3 family residential use. You see, there's a shopping center here. There's a commercial activity here and along Gandy. Just some quick pictures. This is a boat storage and boat use here and kinda storage and office located there. So as you look at this site, we thought it was clearly gonna be a good transition element to the residential, which will keep down noise and impacts of the commercial that mostly surround the site. I think you understand from the prior case that, looking at the heights and the setbacks, this being Ricardo, this being the residence here, Ricardo Place Street here, then you're gonna have a setback, and then you'll have the homes placed here. So coming from a general office and again, in R4, which is 1, 2, 3 family residential, both the LPA and your staff found that it was compatible and works well with the area. And I think the Commissioners are up to speed on the general issues, or really all the issues here. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them for you.
So my question on this, and you may not be able to answer it at this point, but in Ricardo Place, is that gonna be considered the front or the rear?
Ricardo would be, Ricardo would be the front located along here.
So the front would be along there?
Yeah.
Okay. So that they would end up then with a 10-foot front setback?
10 or 20 foot.
Okay.
I have a question about Ricardo Place. So that's owned by the resident, by the residents on the south side of the street?
I'm not, I don't know.
Or is it private road? I mean, 'cause it's a dirt road, right?
It's a road.
So it's not gonna be improved?
I don't know if it's a public right-of-way, if it's private. I don't know at the moment.
Oh, yeah, how to have the front on a private?
Thank you. All right. The catch turned off your tongue.
It's a public road up to a point, somewhere up into here, where the public road ends.
Is it paved?
As you can see in the pictures, it's, it's kinda paved gravel. It's not county standard width, right-of-way. It probably would need improvements on it, but yes, the main access, county standards require that the main access come from the road of lesser designation. And Ricardo Place has the lesser designation between San Martin and Ricardo. So it'd be required to take access off of Ricardo.
So if you said that of the front part of this new, whatever it's gonna be, is on, gonna be facing Ricardo, and then is that where the entrance and exit to the property is gonna be located?
They would have to take their primary access, whether they would be allowed a secondary access off of San Martin, or if fire would require them to have a secondary access, that, again, is a, is a site plan issue. If they have this internal development in here with one access in, again, that's a discussion with Public Works, where that access would have to be based on design. But their, their main access to the development would have to come from Ricardo Place. Minus any waivers or something that they could get that... Wait in a second.
Ricardo Place will have to be built by the developer to county standards. Up to where it's pri, it's public. I don't know about the private part. It is private over here someplace. They will have to improve that road to county standards as part of their itself.
So it's not a through street to Marino, San Marino?
No, there's no, it's, it's right-of-way, but it's, this hasn't been built. It's just paper street on here.
San Marino is right-of-way?
Yes, it is.
But the end of Ricardo is private?
Private right-of-way.
Oh, and San Marino is also?
It's public right-of-way, but it's, there's no road there. It hasn't been built.
I understand. So you're just saying Ricardo is private?
Yeah. I might have a map that has part of it's in the city, part of it's in... You can see Ricardo's in the county. San Marino, from this point to this point, is in this green color, which is in the city of St. Petersburg. Ricardo is under the county's jurisdiction. San Martin's county jurisdiction.
So another quick question, I'm sorry. The property that we're talking about, it's, it's contiguous to San Marino. So it is, it is eligible for annexation as well?
Yes, they are contiguous to city of St. Petersburg, here on the north.
Oh, there also, yeah.
No, we're here.
So that property is subject to annexation?
They could be.
Do we, do we have a clue what?
No, we, when we do our, we get these applications in, we notify the adjacent jurisdictions. So city of St. Petersburg staff has been notified. We have not gotten a response back from them.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to clarify one of my answers, because I don't think I understood the question from Commissioner Long. She asked me if this would be the front of the homes, and I, I think I answered that a little incorrectly because it has been site planned. There's potential that that would be the front of the homes. There could also be a rear part of development. So it has been site planned yet, so I really wanted to clarify that. That's not an issue.
What was the last part of what you said? Part of the site planning?
That would be, that would be the next step, would be putting together a site plan to see how the site would work best. So that, that would be a potential that the front of the homes would be here, but that would not necessarily be the case.
Okay.
Depending on how that puzzle comes together.
How many minutes left?
17 minutes and 28 seconds.
I'm sorry?
They're getting faster. 17 minutes and 28 seconds.
Why, to share it with staff?
Okay, thank you. Sylvia Griswold, please come forward. You also have 10 minutes because, again, you are representing... Your neighborhood and...
This is a piece of property that is really even more than behind us, because those other, the property, that other property he was talking about was behind us. This is directly across from our homes. The problem to me with making it the RM is they have the ability to build apartments, I believe, when you designate it to that. Am I correct? Okay, so, I mean, and I know he talks about, he talks about noise. I didn't have any noise until they built that 7-Eleven. And believe me, that's my, that was yesterday's project for me. I am like the person of the neighborhood. They have the drag racers sit there. So I didn't have any, we don't have any noise other than since they built that 7-Eleven. It's a very quiet, peaceful neighborhood. The little strip mall, they don't do nothing over there, you know? They have a fitness, they have a cryogenics, I mean, you know, a nail salon, which is great. But the, the noise isn't the issue in the neighborhood. So then him saying, trying to put back the noise, that's not, believe this, that's not an issue. That's not an issue for us. And I wasn't misspeaking, I mean, to me, I was looking at this map. This, I thought, was preservation. That's what I thought with the green was when I read it online. And if you see, some of their property does abut the preservation. I didn't say it was Weeden Island. I mean, Weeden Island was close by is what I said. I didn't say they were touching Weeden Island. I said Weeden Island is close by to the location. So as you can see, there is some, they're touching something. I'm not sure what it is. But I'm, the little green spot here, you can see, and I, I think is probably where the road ends to be private. This is a dirt road. There's nothing there but dirt. We, as the neighborhood, have maintained it. My neighbor this morning was laughing because they came to patch. It's like, there is no, it's not even asphalt. It's like they throw down this concrete, and that, and that's fine for us because we like what we have. You know, we don't complain, we don't cause trouble. You know, San Marino, and of course, like I said, I'm in the middle of the storm. I've got the city of St. Pete behind me, where they're building those townhomes forever. County is in front of me. I've got a little piece of the city right about here on my lot, and then it's county. It's like the strangest, I'm in, like I said, I have the perfect, I know, I saw your face. I have the perfect storm. And I have to deal with all these different entities and try to have some type of constant, you know what I'm saying? You try to do it, but you're never gonna make anybody happy. And yes, I would love it to stay vacant forever, but I know that's not a possibility. I've lived in my home for 35 years. We've been fortunate enough to have those 35 years. And Mr. Pressman, I dealt with a couple of years ago on an issue, so he pretty much told me that it was gonna be developed in kinda, you know, interesting terms, but we won't even go there. But, and that's fine. Like I said, he has a right. He owns that land. I do get that. I'm just asking that we make it somewhat compatible to the neighborhood. And as you can see, there really, other than that townhome development behind me, do you see any other townhomes there? We are not on Gandy. Gandy is a ways from us. So I'd like, like I said, and yes, there are commercial, but there are commercial buildings in a lot of places. But that doesn't mean Brighton Bay and places like that, they don't have houses because there's a commercial, you know what I mean? Everything is townhomes because there's a commercial. You know, it's all a perspective of where you are and where you're coming from. Like I said, our road has been dirt. My house is, it's a dead end. San Marino going towards Gandy, which is county, has been vacated at the end. The boatyard, actually, and Mr. Prision vacated that. San Marino on the other end, they haven't vacated, but I don't know, I don't believe the city is willing to wanna put a road in right now. That's not saying in the future they may, but right now, I just am getting them to replant a bunch of stuff because the people behind me tore it up because they just wanted to. So like I said, that is, you know, we flood. We're all up in still houses except for Mr. Danicker, who was there 60 years. They didn't put still houses up then. And I don't think we're probably more than 20, 25 feet. I don't think, you know, they're, they're not that tall. We're just not that tall. And the whole thing about the boxing, yes, I know there's gonna be a setback. I get that. I mean, it's not, I'm not trying to be, to make it different than it is. I'm just trying to say at the end of the day, we're gonna be surrounded 45, 50 feet, and we're at 20. That's my argument. I'm not trying to mislead. I'm not trying, I'm trying to just give you an impression of what it feels like for us to be there. We, you know, imagine, like I said, just single-family homes, and then all of a sudden, you've got all this other stuff. And like I said, I know that they, he has a right to build. I know that there's, but I really would hate to see it go to RM just for the fact that if they thought about building apartments there, that would be devastating. I think to the, to the quality of our life in the neighborhood. And I understand that, you know, they've been talking about having to come out on Ricardo because they were telling me, actually, I spoke with, I think, Michael? I spoke with him to get a better idea in my head of what, 'cause I don't like to misspeak. That's not my, that's not my, and I'm not, you know, I'm not well-versed in this. I kinda hoped I never would have to be. But you learn. The people behind me has taught me a lot. It's taught me who to go to. You know, I know the city people, they know me on a first-name basis because, you know, I'm trying to have some type of quality of life with all this chaos going on around you. So that's all, like I said, we, we, you know, we're a quiet little neighborhood. You know, we understand they're gonna build. We just would like to see some type of compatibility, some type of respect for what, what's there now in that, in that, you know, in that frame of mind. But yeah, we do flood. We do have problems with flooding. And like I said, the road isn't a road. They would have to do that. We don't, I don't look forward to if they would make this hook-up to sewer. I don't wanna, I can't afford, I have a septic tank. I have a commercial septic tank. Mine was the second house built on the street, and then they invaded, and we weren't happy about that. But they're okay. We'll let them sit. But thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. So, okay, Mr. Pressman.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, again, I have the grave respect for the neighbors and Ms. Griswold, as she's indicated, we've spoken before. But the reality here is that the site is located on three sides by commercial activity. It's a very intensive site. Residential is permitted here by right, 1, 2, 3 family-type styles. There is no future land use amendment here. Density will not be increasing, same element. It's the, it's the same density that's proposed or that's existing. And in regard to Ms. Griswold, I certainly did not mean that she intended to mislead anyone. I was just trying to clarify the record, what some of her comments were. I, I didn't mean to intend to sound in any way in that direction. And again, on flooding, right now, it's vacant land. Water's going wherever it's going. Once it's engineered, as you all well know, water will have to stay in the site, will have to manage. It will be far, far better than what it is now. So in regard to this site being across the street, improved, widened to county standards, front setbacks on both sides, front setback or rear setback, there'll be plenty of dismounts between the two with required landscape by the county. We're happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
What was the rear setback? I don't remember.
Under RM is 5 feet. The front setback is...
10, 5 feet. No, front is 10, right?
I wrote it. I have to look for it here.
I wrote it down, too.
Front is 10 to the structure under RM, 20 feet to a garage, yeah.
Since the residences could be facing either way in the site plan, can we make sure that it's at least a 10-foot setback, even if it's the back of the building?
I'm gonna say again, we're happy to work with the Commissioner until what makes you comfortable.
Make it the same 10-foot from Ricardo?
Yeah.
You do not have a conditional overlay proposed for this case?
Okay.
So, no, we can't do that.
That's true.
This, this one does not have a conditional overlay on this request here. It's just a straight request to RM. So any of the uses in RM could happen.
So when you get to working on a site plan, could you just put that in the back of your head?
Ask a question of the attorney. We can't be more restrictive, which is what the conditional overlay would be, even though it wasn't advertised? I'm, I'm asking the question because I was under the impression that you could be more restrictive.
Well, I just wanted to be clear, that's not what is part of your package.
Right.
I think we could look at potentially adding that. I would, you know, defer to the owner's representative if he has any issue, but, I mean, it is certainly something I think we could entertain.
So if you, if you make it conditional overlay, then you can define things within that conditional overlay?
And that's a whole different process, right?
And just do want to add for the record, Ricardo Place, it's public right-of-way. There is an agreement with the residents that they privately maintain it because they liked the level of, they liked, they didn't want a full-blown, you know, county road through there. They liked it the way it was. So that's coming by way of Mr. Lyon. He's monitoring from afar and wanted to make sure that we were aware of that, so.
But that would have to be improved?
Yes, ma'am. It would have to be improved. Yes.
Okay, anything else? Then we'll close the public hearing and see where you wanna go.
So, so what did you say about changing this to a, a, a conditional overlay?
It's not what's been advertised.
Understand.
It is not what the applicant made a presentation on. I don't know whether Mr. Pressman has any indication in that regard. I would be a bit hesitant to impose something that goes beyond what the applicant was prepared to address here tonight.
Well, one of the choices would be to defer and to, if you have other conditions that you'd like to do, then we could ask that this be reworked as a conditional overlay with setback considerations and/or height, if that's what you're interested in. If you want it to be the same height and setbacks as the other previous agenda item, then...
It has to do it through that, it has to go through a conditional overlay.
Be consistent?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, let's go ahead and take that as a motion to defer and to have discussions with the representative, Mr. Pressman?
That would be my motion.
Okay. I'll second that.
40-foot height and 10-foot rear setback.
Yeah. Is Mr. Pressman okay with that? Are you okay with that? And that's not what you presented to us, so I'm just asking, are you okay with that?
Well, we can turn it down.
I, I guess my best answer was, I said three times, is we're happy to move forward with the commission. what the Commission is comfortable with. I clearly see a little bit of direction, so I think, you know, if that's the direction the Commission, then if that's what direction...
And what I would suggest, if the Commission is, is going to move in that direction, is to perhaps not define specifically what you would want as far as the height and the setbacks, but let staff address these issues. Because you are looking at a different parcel that's closer to Gandy that has different current zoning and land use, so there may be some different issues in play. And I would recommend that you defer to your professional staff and let them work this out with Mr. Pressman.
That's a great idea.
That makes sense to me.
I'll change that.
You're changing your motion to defer this to the staff for negotiation?
For under conditional overlay.
To approve it.
All right, so a motion by Commissioner Eggers, second by...
Just a point of order, Chairman. So are we doing a time period, a time element on this to come back?
If you defer it to a date certain, you would not have to re-advertise it, but I don't, I would have to defer to planning staff on...
I think procedurally, we would have to go back to the LPA at that point, so. I think we would have to go back to the local planning agency with a change.
You're really looking at a different zoning category.
You're looking, exactly, so with the conditional overlay, so we're just going to have to re-advertise, I think, at this point.
I'd like to suggest that we just move forward and let the staff work on it in the site planning process.
But we can't retrieve his height.
We have no, that doesn't give us any muscle.
If you wish to impose the same types of limitations you did in the last case, it needs to be done through the conditional overlay, which is a part of your zoning code, and that action needs to be undertaken by this board.
And there are, there are differences that came into play as to why we did not recommend the conditional overlay on this particular piece. Because you had a piece of it that is, you know, office zoning, it's actually, they're voluntarily bringing down the height and down zoning on that. So on balance, we looked at this, you know, as, as a transition area, you know, backing up to Gandy and the commercial. And so we did take a bit of a different approach to it than we did the other. It's across, you know, Ricardo Place, they will have to have a setback from Ricardo Place. So just wanted to kind of elaborate a little bit on why we recommended what we recommended, so.
Good point.
So Chairman, the choice, I guess the Commission is either to approve this tonight or then to defer, correct? Is, I guess, the decision to the Commission that you're stating?
To defer for a conditional overlay.
Either to defer or to approve.
Moving towards is deferring this. I'd like to do it in such a way that there's no additional cost that you were suggesting for advertising, if we can accomplish that.
I think that's hard to say, because as Renee referred to, we would need to send it back to the LPA. And I'm just, I'm not sure what that timeframe would be.
Okay, Commissioner Long, you were going to say something.
I was, but I don't even know how to articulate everything I'm thinking about because I really would like to reconsider the vote we took on the other one. Because here's what I'm thinking. I probably am not going to say it right, but we just hired a new resiliency person for our county. We are going to be looking at all kinds of issues as it relates to sea level rise, climate change, and what do we do to mitigate the, the place that we're in today to protect our citizens? And in this presentation, I heard some new information about Ricardo Place and how it's a natural road and people like it that way, and they don't want a big, wide county road there. And now we're talking about making changes to the point where it will have to be a new county road, correct? I think I heard that.
Anything that's done there will have to be a new county road.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. So I, I would like to have some further discussion about where this puts us in our plans for resiliency and sustainability. I've been around in this area a lot. It's not very far from the St. Martin Bridge. You drive over there on a bright sunny day, we've had our workshops out there, and it's flooded. So I don't, I just, I'm just very concerned that we're moving forward like it's deja vu, and it's not.
Madam Chair, to that point, though, they could start building a 75-foot apartment, office building tomorrow without us doing anything, correct?
Well, seriously.
What I'm seeing that's contiguous to Ricardo Place is, and staff can correct me, I see R4 zoning and a land use that's residential, so some form of residential development could go in there that I presume would also require the improvement of Ricardo Place to county standards.
And Commissioner Long, while I greatly respect where you're going, it's probably going to take us one to two years to come up with our resiliency plan and then maybe even longer to apply it to neighborhoods and everything else like that.
And the clock is ticking. And the clock is ticking.
And I think that the staff actually has incorporated that into our current regulations. We may do more, but I mean, I just don't want, I don't want that to be on Hank, that he's going to come in and write, write a new code. Kelly and them have looked at those issues and incorporated those into our existing codes for a very long time.
But obviously is considering the flood elevation with all of the height and everything that they were looking at already. Commissioner Welch.
And that's a good point. So we have incorporated what we know at this point in terms of sea level rise into our code and our planning.
But your new stormwater manual does take into consideration some, and not my expert, but some level of sea level rise increasing, you know, in your stormwater requirements. So, and that's something, you know, again, the flexibility to develop on a given site, given these constraints, or development rights that are, that are, that are, that are now. You know, to be able to effectively deal with, you know, the stormwater requirements, that's just another element. They're going to need flexibility to be able to, to deal with those requirements. There's no doubt that it's a low area there. So, you know, flexibility gives you the ability to effectively deal with it versus, you know...
But as we gain new knowledge and we get new projections, we're going to update our requirements.
Certainly.
And so just to add another curve in it, I'm in a different place on this. When I see this parcel is different than the southern parcels, it's closer to Gandy, I'm looking at commercial development all around it, the Goodwill, the mall, and RV storage. I just view this one differently. So I'm in a different spot than, than I was on the southern parcels on this one.
And since I made that motion and I've heard some additional comments, I'm starting to move towards the, the request.
Am I making a motion to approve?
It's at 35 feet.
There was a motion to defer. You can, it was made by Commissioner Eggers, you could remove that.
I thought you removed it.
And Commissioner Gerard, you can remove your second if you wish.
Of course.
Okay. Would you like to remake a motion?
I'd like to move for approval.
I would move for approval.
Okay. So there's a motion by Commissioner Gerard and a second by Commissioner Peters to approve this project or approve this recommendation and request, excuse me. I don't have a project yet. Okay, let's go ahead and open up the cards. Okay, it's a five to two vote. Okay, very good. All right, thank you. Again, thank you to the neighborhood for being here. We really appreciate your words of wisdom and sharing. I do think that the cardboard boxes, like I said, was just a very, very visual novel way of describing what your concerns were, so thank you. Okay, agenda item 64.
Proposed ordinance amending Chapter 150 impact fees of the Pinellas County Land Development Code. The public hearing was properly advertised. Affidavit of publication has been received for filing. No correspondence has been received. The matter is properly before the Board to be heard.
Okay, I have no cards on this particular agenda item. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Move approval.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Gerard and a second by Commissioner Justice. That is unanimous. Okay, agenda item 65.
Case number CP040219. This is proposed ordinance amending the Commercial, General, Residential, Office, Retail, Future Land Use Map categories and moving in the capital improvement elements of the Pinellas County Comprehensive Plan. The public hearing was properly advertised. Affidavit of publication has been received for filing. No correspondence has been received. The matter is properly before the Board to be heard.
Thank you. I do have two cards. One is against, the other is, I'm not sure. So we'll call them up after we have a short staff presentation.
Good evening, Renee Vincent, Planning Director, if I can operate this. So this is second reading on a set of comprehensive plan amendments amending predominantly the future land use categories and descriptions pertaining to our mixed use and resident, mixed use and commercial categories. Let me just click through here and get this up. The commercial general and the residential office and retail land use categories will see density increases up to 24 units per acre allowed in those land use categories. This does affect approximately 2,000 acres primarily located along major thoroughfares and corridors. I'll put up a reference map. It's difficult to read, but it can get an idea of the parcels where the 24 units per acre would be allowed in commercial, commercial land use or residential office, retail land use categories. You'll see them, you know, the purple along US 19 and then all along over other corridors where the commercial general exists. And really, there were, the purpose, the main purpose of this is to promote, you know, redevelopment and affordable housing in corridors where transit is available and hopefully make those projects more viable. We also are proposing to adopt the Target Employment Center overlay district. I'll provide you another reference map for that. This is already in the countywide plan and this simply mirrors the countywide plan map by reference. So anywhere in the, the hatch overlay along with, in the blue, that's the unincorporated Pinellas County, those are the areas where the Target Employment Center overlay would, would be in effect, and that would allow for an increase in floor area ratio for manufacturing, office and research and development uses in anywhere that's inside that Target Employment Center. The proposed set of amendments would also reduce or remove the 12 and a half unit per acre. It's kind of an across-the-board density restriction that's been the comprehensive plan for, for many, many years. This would allow our, we do have two additional categories of residential high and residential medium that exist with 15 units per acre and 30 units per acre and their existing designations. This would allow those to actually achieve those densities in a redevelopment context. For the residential high, that 30 unit per acre designation, there's only a couple of these in existence, actually. They're very, very small. You have to actually mark them with a flag so that you can see them. The, the, the more gold color is a residential high at 15 units per acre. So we just allow those properties to recognize those densities in a redevelopment context. We also are adding recreation open spaces, a permitted use in most of our future land use map categories. For some reason, it wasn't specifically called out, so we took the opportunity to add it. We removed the zoning compatibility restrictions from each of their land use map categories. This will allow, it will remove some non-conforming situations. So, you know, you may have a land use that allows residential and, you know, a commercial property, a commercial zoning that maybe currently wouldn't, you know, allow for residential, but it, it corrects a lot of those existing non-conforming situations by removing their strict compatibility requirements. Doesn't mean that you can develop willy-nilly. You still have to have at least a matching land use and zoning, you know, use that you can pair up between the two to be able to develop, but it does make it a little bit, a little bit easier. In the commercial neighborhood, we added manufacturing light as a secondary use that really supports artisanal manufacturing in neighborhoods. Again, you'd have to have enabling zoning to be able to do that. In our employment district, we removed self-storage as an allowable use because those are really chewing up available industrial lands for more high employment uses. In the industrial general, we're adding manufacturing medium and removing self-storage as allowable uses and adding marinas and office. Again, these are some cleanup issues that have been lingering. Along with this set of amendments, we're also updating the capital improvements element. Essentially, this really simplifies it, gets it into compliance with current requirements of Florida statutes. It recognizes our portfolio improvement, CIP portfolio management process and allows us to reference our annual CIP processes and eliminates those annual amendments to the capital improvements element. Oops, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to go back that far. In closing, we find that these are, these proposed amendments are consistent with our comprehensive plan and we do recommend approval. Again, this is second reading. Upon, the only comments that we received from, from the state, from the reviewing agencies was with regard to the comprehensive, the capital improvements element. And there was just some minor language changes that they wanted us to be, to remain consistent with. We made those changes. And that was the only, the only thing that we needed to tweak from the first set of
Any questions, Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you go back to the first map you showed?
I don't know if that's centered or not, but...
And just kind of in how it's applied and what does it mean from what we're allowing today and what we're allowing tomorrow?
So, so currently in the, the purple and the red shaded areas now, so far as residential density is allowed, you're capped at, actually at 12 and a half units per acre because of the countywide restriction. This will remove that and will make these categories consistent with the countywide plan map, which in the countywide plan map, these would be retail and services at 24 units to the acre for allowable residential density.
So this is residential, this has nothing to do with allowable density or allowable activity of commercial nature?
It doesn't change what's allowable for commercial. So these become more mixed-use oriented because we are allowing that, that higher residential density.
Because if you go, I mean, I was looking at the key to the map, I think, and so you've got commercial general, and so I guess I was thrown by why those we were highlighted. Like if you go down, I mean, I was looking at the key that's at the bottom of the map and then...
Oh, this was just showing, because it was a reference for the coastal storm area, so we can't increase density in those areas. So it was more of a reference map. So the way the language is written, so this parcel sitting over here that you can see, which is red, but is also in the coastal storm area, they're going to be limited to their current density. We would not be able to increase that because we don't want to increase density in the coastal storm area.
So there's, so it's only the, really the purple areas that you're showing on that map that we're actually talking about?
The purple and the reds.
And the red.
And the reds. Those are, those are commercial general, the red's commercial general land use. The purple is the residential office retail land use. Both of those categories, we're proposing to increase the allowable residential density to 24 units to the acre. And again, we're trying to promote affordable, you know, affordable housing opportunities primarily in these commercial corridors where we already have transit available and hopefully with future transit investments, these will become more viable.
So again, I don't want to belabor it, but you have the corner of 54th and Park Street, you currently have a retail shopping center. You'd be allowing residential mixed-use development?
Question. You just said you're trying to get mixed-use development. So are you, you're restricting what can go on there as far as splitting it between office and residential? Maybe you have to have a mix of the two or could they be all residential?
It could go all residential. I mean, honestly, the chances of that, unless it's a vacant parcel, it perhaps would. But, but yes, that is allowable. It could go all residential. I'll state unequivocally, you know, as a nation, as a country, as a state, and as Pinellas County, we are over-retailed in this county. We have a lot of dead retail space. So opportunities for redevelopment, you know, and we don't... So opportunities for redevelopment, you know, and we don't have a lot of, you know, a lot of areas for high density residential to occur. And so, you know, the intent of this is to encourage it.
Can I ask one more question? So again, not to be too, looking at one, but now I'm looking at Park Street and Tyrone Boulevard and the southwest corner is red, is in that, but in the northeast corner, which is, again, you have shopping centers on both sides. Why was one in and one not?
If it's, I'm a hundred percent familiar with the area you're showing. I mean, these are the, these are our land use, unincorporated county land use. So if there's a difference in jurisdiction and it's not showing up on our map, it's probably the difference. This is only our unincorporated area.
Okay, thank you. That makes.
Anyone else? Question marks? Okay. Let's go ahead. We have two citizens who wish to speak and the first one, I know I'm going to totally mispronounce your name, but I'm going to try. He's, lives on Egrith Lane in Claywater and it's Sethless Nuskert? And I'm really off.
My name is, it's not hard. My name is Mike Schlenzker. I live in Feather Sound on Egrith Lane.
Thank you.
Okay. I've appeared before the board.
You've been here before, but I was like trying to read this guy.
I did make a good use of my time and I, and I made my own graphic, which I would like to have.
Put it as, right on the seal?
On the seal?
Yes, sir.
As you are looking down at it, we will see it.
Okay.
Nope. Just like that.
Is that good?
That's good.
Okay. We're not ready to talk about ERCO and the density. This is a proposal for changing the density permission to build buildings. It comes at a time when, when this 131 acre parcel is going from an empty golf course to a lot of property already stuffed into it. We're starting to call it Six Flags over ERCO. So, I mean, we have two 747s will, will make a call on the airport every day of every week, 747s on a little, a little golf course, a fixed base operation, which is like its own little airport, 42 T hangars. Those are hangars for, for air, for aircraft and another eight, eight or 10 hangars here. And we're changing the density and the, and the way this discussion about changing the density started was in November of 2018, in the agenda for the planning department, it was about ERCO only. And so because of that and because we have not had the chance, we've been promised a meeting with the planning department and a second meeting with the airport to talk about some of these, well, there's more changes than the Six Flags. It's going to go to 10 flags. But we, this, this has been talked about in terms of ERCO and yet it's, it's now changed to the whole county, but it, but it, they're going to put some kind of residential, some kind of office and some kind of manufacturing, yet left in this 131 acres. We think that's kind of a lot. We do get a chance as a, as a community to at least talk about these things, which are planned for just 130 acres. And so unless we want to exclude what, what would apply to ERCO, we're being asked to, to allow this to apply to ERCO without ever having an added discussion at all. And we'll have our discussions next week when it won't matter. And so as a representative of Feather Sound, my first proposal would be that we table the motion for 60 days to allow us to have our discussions with the planning department and the airport in terms of putting yet another kind of building on this little golf course. We get a chance to talk to the airport and the planning department. That's, we're allowed to do that and we've been promised that. But it has not, it has not happened yet. We want it to happen before we are, we are held within the confines of new, a new building type.
Okay. Just for your information on the second page of the overview of this, it specifically says that the proposed changes to the comprehensive plan policies related to the ERCO property have been removed. These changes will be reevaluated after additional workshops can be held with the Feather Sound community.
Is, is it in here?
It is on the cover, the staff report on page two, not on your agenda. That's just a copy of the agenda.
Okay, so I haven't had a chance to see this.
All right. So, but it's good news. So nothing will happen in Feather Sound ERCO property until after there's meetings held with you.
Now, could, could I, in order to make me sleep tonight?
Would you like a copy of it?
Yeah.
All right. We can do that.
All right.
We'll email it to you.
And then I promise to take my drawing away from the table.
Well, thanks again for being such a good neighbor in that neighborhood and always, you know, coming. Actually, Renee is going to give it to you.
Okay.
Show it to you. Okay.
Okay, perfect.
Your copy.
Okay, thank you.
On the ERCO, the restrictions are there can't be ever any residential on the airport. So there wouldn't be residential no matter what.
Okay.
Okay.
That's good.
Thanks for sticking through it tonight with us. Robin Hood. And that's the only other card I have unless anybody else in the audience wishes to speak.
Hi. Hi, my name is Robin Hood.
I was going to say, you know, you have so much fun with your name.
Yeah, I do have a lot of fun. I thank you all for taking the time to listen to me. I don't do this speaking very often, but I feel compelled to address the situation when you want to change the density in the Pinellas County. And my concerns are that we all are citizens and you are fortunately in the position to make this very, very important decision moving forward on this. I think we all have family, we all have children, we have grandchildren, and we all know the density in this area is pretty overwhelming already, whether it be the school system, the medical system, the ambulances, the, the flooding. There are just so many things that are involved in this. And when you're talking about doubling the, the density in these particular areas, you might not think it's a lot. I, however, want to think out of the box and thinking this is opening Pandora's box for things in the future. So if you're going to allow this density to change for these couple of areas, somebody's going to come in and we're all citizens here. Somebody's going to come in later on when you're out of office and they're going to say, here's our little ching-ching over here. They've already done it once, they'll do it again. And that's why I'm compelled to be here tonight to, to hope that you, as our commissioners, will reconsider this and not allow this to happen. This is important to all of us and our children and our future here. And you talk about wanting to project into the future. This is only money. You could, it's only money. It's not land and you'll never get that back. You'll never get what you want here in this county back if you give it away today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience that wished to speak? I'm sorry, can you come forward, please?
I'm not here to speak. Could we see the, the map one more time, the overlay?
Sure.
This one?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Does that help you?
Could you like that?
If you need to walk through it with, okay. So I don't see anybody else from the audience who wishes to speak. So at this point, we will end the public hearing and this is, of course, the second hearing, so I'll entertain a motion. Move approval. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay.
Did you say this is one, the first is two?
Do you have a question?
This is the second.
Yeah.
Now, I just to, to, I just want to say, Robin Hood, thank you for being here all day and I appreciate your comments, but I have the opposite view. I think we are growing again and I think this is targeting where the growth makes sense and where we have the infrastructure to handle it and where housing and transportation can all work together to handle that density. So I certainly appreciate your point. I'm third generation Pinellas as well, but I think this gets us to growing in a smart and sustainable way. But I really appreciate you being here. I just wanted to address that.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Motion was made by Commissioner Gerard, second by Commissioner Peters. Any further comments? And I want to thank everybody else in the audience for being here. We did end the public hearing. I'm, we're happy to talk to you after the vote, though. Thank you. One else? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. It passes unanimously. Thank you, staff, for the hard work and listening to others as you put this plan together. We really appreciate that. And so with that, there is nothing further on our agenda.
You have item 66.
66.
I was like, I thought I was at the end. Uh huh. Okay. 66.
Okay. Item 66 is case number CP100619. Proposed ordinance amending the future land use and quality communities element and the housing element of the Pinellas County Comprehensive Plan. The public hearing was properly advertised. Affidavit of publication has been received for filing. No correspondence has been received. The matter is properly before the board to be heard. This is the first hearing.
Okay.
Thank you. So this set of amendments is actually proposed to remove, to remove two, two policies that are in the comprehensive plan, one the future land use element and one the housing element. And really, we're proposing to remove these because they conflict with the, the future amendments that we just did. We, frankly, we missed this, removing these policies and didn't realize we were setting up a conflict. These policies are held over for quite some time, that they actually only allowed affordable housing, specifically affordable housing densities to 12 and a half and 15 units per acre respectively in the, in the ROR and the CG. So now we just want to be able to acknowledge that, you know, that would be more restrictive than what residential densities will be allowed moving forward. So we want to put them on an even footing. So we just want to strike these policies from the comp plan.
Any questions? Move approval.
This is just the first hearing. You don't have to take any action.
Take any action today. Only we have, this is the first hearing. Just to answer questions, we will have the second hearing. But I also, I don't have any cards from anyone on the audience, but I just want to make sure that there's no one who wishes to speak now under a public hearing. Okay, then I'll close the public hearing. Like I said, we don't have to vote, but if you have any questions, it's a good time to ask. Okay, all right, then.
Commissioner, Chris has a question.
In the documents I have, is there's an authorization to transmit? Does there need to be a vote for that?
There doesn't need to be a vote for that. Yeah, it'll be transmitted to the state.
Yeah, okay. Thanks. Okay. Do, is there any other agenda item I'm missing? All right, we are adjourned then. Thank you all very much for a productive but long day.